Welcome. I am calling and ordering this meeting of the Honorable Select Board on Monday, December 5th, 2022. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Damian Hahn?
Affirmative.
John Heard?
Yes.
Steve Decourcy?
Yes.
Eric Helman?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Sandy Poehler?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
Ashley Meyer?
Yes.
Tonight's meeting of the Honorable Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, signed into law on July 17, 2022, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 31st, 2023. Before you begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, was being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Participants by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Knowits Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So let's step forth on tonight's agenda, and next is the land acknowledgement. I would like to read the land acknowledgement that the board supported in the spring of 2021 and that was adopted at the 2021 annual town meeting. We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. Next on the agenda is acknowledgement of an expression of appreciation to Kevin Mills, a former member of the zoning voter appeals. Kevin's not able to join us tonight, and so we're going to postpone this till either the meeting on 21st or the first meeting in January. But you do have the letter that I crafted for him, and I'll ask my colleagues to take a look at it, and if you think that it can be improved in any way, please hesitate to let me know. This is something that, yeah, I'm just kind of, I mean, it's something I've been wanting to do. I mean, we did it for the Chair of TAC when he retired from the Transcription Advisory Committee, and it's something that I would like to do more of, to the extent possible. Certainly, I think if you read the letter, it's very insightful about Kevin being in his relationship with his colleagues, and so I think often in expression of appreciation, we benefit from it probably as much if not more than the person to whom we're trying to express appreciation. So once again, if you see anything that, any way to improve it, words missing, overall content, whatever it means, I welcome your input. And so next, we'll move on to the review and to approve bond issue, I'm sorry, excuse me, to review and approve of bond issues, bond anticipation notes and related matters. Well, I'll now turn it over to Sandy Poehler, the town manager.
Thank you. On Thursday, December 1st, the town conducted a bond sale, which is basically an auction. We had several bidders for both our bonds and our bond anticipation notes. At that time, we sold $8,515,000 worth of bonds, which was actually a gross total of $8,945,000, but at the sale, we received cash payments of $430,000 in premium pay, or premiums, bringing down the amount of the bond at $8,515,000. These are general obligation bonds, and they are mostly for the construction of the new DPW facility plus all of the bonded capital projects that were approved by town meeting last spring. In addition to that, on that date, we sold $4,607,401 worth of bond anticipation notes. Those are essentially bridge loans that we pay interest on for a year, and we will then convert to permanent bonds next year. The interest rate on the bonds was 3.77%, which was good because we had budgeted originally for 4%, and lately, we were thinking it might be as high as 5.5%. So we're very happy with this sale. It is higher than we got about a year ago, which was just under 2%, but that is the market. The interest rate on the bands was 3.1336%, and I think it very interestingly shows that we have a very flat yield curve. In other words, the short-term interest rates and the long-term interest rates are very, very close to each other. That's sort of unusual. I think it reflects the fact that on the short-term interest rates, people are paying a lot of attention to what the Fed is doing in raising its interest rates, but that people think over the next 20 years that the true interest rates that they're going to have to deal with aren't going to be that much higher. We issued bands because we're not yet finished with the DPW project, but we expect to be done with the construction by the time we need to go out for bonding again. And so what we do in that last phase of almost any project is instead of selling the full amount of bonds, which might mean that we borrowed too much if the project comes in under budget, we sell a band, and then, once we know the final project cost, we then only sell the bond for the remainder of the project. The one other thing I just mentioned, in case you are interested in it, is that usually we sell our bonds in February, but this year, we decided to do it in December because we know that the Fed has at least one more meeting where it's expected to raise interest rates again, so we thought that this was a good time to borrow the money. Overall, I think we've had very good success with selling our bonds, both for all of our projects. The fact of the matter is that we've previously sold permanent bonds for the first part of the DPW project at very, very good interest rates, and so now we're just kind of closing things out. You have before you a few votes, one, a determination of the maximum useful life of capital assets purchases. It's something that the board needs to vote to declare how long the useful life of various pieces of equipment are. That is laid out in the draft vote for you. The other thing then is be actually approving the award of sale. We conducted the sale, so there is first the award of sale of the bond, and then the award of sale of the band. And then, once that voted, we will have to circulate to you, which we do not have tonight, the documents that you'll have to sign to affirm all that. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And you can just raise your hands. I can see clearly enough, so we don't have to go down the line unless you just want to. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This borrowing, I know it's for DPW, but I have a memory, does it cover other projects?
Yes, there were a number of projects that were voted in the capital plan at town meeting last spring, buying trucks and, well, in fact, it lists them here. A street sweeper, a couple of smaller fire replacement vehicles, a cemetery pack hole, a fire alarm system, and a forklift. So basically, anything in the capital plan that's worth $100,000 or more, we tend to bond for.
So this borrowing covers the initial DPW, what we need right now, town meeting votes, the second borrowing, this borrowing covers everything. The second borrowing will just be for the DPW?
Yeah, yeah, the band.
And then something else comes up? I'm just...
No, you have it exactly right. So we're basically putting a pile of cash together, some from a bond and some from a band. Those two together should get us to the end of the DPW project. If it comes in exactly on budget, then we'll sell a bond at that point for the exact amount of the band we just sold and pay that over time. If it comes in under budget, we'll sell a smaller bond and pay that overtime. So we just have to see what the final cost is going to be, and we should know that by next fall.
Okay. I'd like to move favorable action for the sale of the bond and bond anticipation notes closing on December 15, 2022, as well as the determination and approval of the maximum life of department equipment as contained here in the memo and recommended vote. Is that good?
That's very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, excuse me, I just wanted to check with Attorney Hahn. So we can do all these votes at once, or I was getting an impression we had to do separate votes?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can do these all at once. The treasurer has recommended basically a form vote. While it says further voted, essentially, each one of those further voted items is a further detail or qualification on the entirety. So you can take one vote as proposed by the treasurer and given your reference materials for the public to follow along.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, let's just hope that that flat yield curve doesn't invert, because that'll indicate a recession, and that's not good for anybody. So on a motion to approve the sale of the bonds and the bands and the assessment of the lifetime of the equipment, the capital purchases, by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. Heard, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Your unanimous vote?
Great. Thank you. So I think that's it, Mr. Poehler?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, great. So we'll now move on to item number five on the agenda, is the discussion and vote, the town manager position search statement, and discussion about the selection committee. So can we bring in Mr. Lynch?
It doesn't look like his name is listed under the attendees. If someone wants to raise their hand, that may be with Mr. Lynch. I can promote you.
See if I see anyone else.
I see Sharon Flaherty. I know I've seen a video of her.
Yeah, so maybe Sharon's filling in, and Sharon certainly is part of community paradigm. So let's put in Sharon, please.
Good evening.
Hi, Ms. Flaherty. Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. Mr. Lynch is juggling a couple of meetings, so he's going to be here as soon as he can.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So, all right, but I think, I think we, are you comfortable moving on now? Would you like us to wait a bit?
Absolutely. We can certainly go through the position statement if you'd like.
Okay, great, please, let's do, let's do that.
Great, well, it was, as you know, it was a version two. I had requested some feedback from board members if there was any feedback to be had. I did make some revisions based upon recommendations received, waited for any further input, and then sent it back out today, earlier today. So the board members should all have received that early this afternoon, and it should be in your packet, I believe. And if there's any other changes or discussions regarding the position statement, I'm happy to hear those and make changes.
Great, thank you. So turn to my colleagues. Mr. Helman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the work that went into this and the revisions. I would prefer not to name the salary. I don't, I actually don't know what plus or minus means. I'm not sure that's what that signifies, but regardless, I don't think I know what the salary is. I think that that really will depend on the applicants, their years of experience, their qualifications. It's not a secret what our past two town managers or any of them have made, but my concern would be that that would be misleading. And, you know, I'm a strong proponent of paying our employees what they're worth, because I think you get what you pay for, and the market is the market, but I don't know what the market is. You know, I think we're going to find out when we go through the applicants and have those discussions. So that would be my main substantive feedback on this.
Anyone else? Mr. Heard?
I'd say I'm fine not having a salary on there. I would just ask the consultant if it's, if that and your experiences can affect the ability to draw candidates. If not, then I think it's fine to not have a salary, and we can come up with it as we find a candidate.
Ms. Flaherty?
We have always listed, pretty much always have listed a salary. I can tell you that will be the first question, and people will not apply without having reached out to hear what the ballpark will be for the salary, understanding that a plus or minus means it depends on qualifications, experience. It could be less if you have less experience. It could be more if you're a stellar candidate that the town really wants to pull in. There are some advertisements that we would need to list a salary in order to place the ad. There's a couple of those that we usually use.
Great, thank you, Ms. Flaherty. I think Mr. Lynch has joined us?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I was able, I was just brought in as a panelist, but I was able to listen to a few of the comments before that, and I just caught a little bit of what Sharon was saying there. Many of the places that this position will be posted, Sharon may have already said this, many of the places where this will be posted actually require us to place some type of salary range in there. Obviously, you know, if we advertise in a place or post a position in a place, we don't have to do that, you know, I guess we wouldn't have to, but it is a, it is a question. It is, does sort of drive people's, it gets people's attention to have some sense of what the salary is. The plus or minus is a pretty standard terminology. It basically indicates that the salary, the given salary is sort of the midway point, that you can go a little bit more if you find a candidate that is particularly experienced and attractive to you because of the skills they bring to the table. You could pay a little bit less if they may not have everything that you're looking for and may not have quite as much experience. So it provides some sort of range for people, and it's, some communities opt to put a definitive, you know, first step, pop step, and let negotiations fall into that category. What we find is if there can be an attractive number that's put in there that gets people's attention, that they can sort of count on that sort of salary number, that gets their attention and generates the interest in the position. So it is, if you look at the MMA job board, you look at the ICMA, you look at the Emerging Local Government Leaders Organization, you know, those are the Women Leading Government Organization, these are all pretty standard to have some type of salary in there.
All right, thanks very much. Anyone else? Mrs. Mahan?
I'm not sure. I want to go next, but was Mr. Heard, were you finished?
Well, I just wanted to follow up and just say, if that was the case, I think 220,000 is on the high end of, I would be more comfortable with a range, so people don't, I think people see 220,000, like, all right, I'm going to get 220,000, plus or minus 5,000. I think, I mean, Mrs. Chaplin got his salary because he was here for a long, long time, and we valued him as one of the most qualified town managers in the state in saying anything with Mr. Poehler, but I don't know that we're, for someone to come in at the top of the range of what, around 220,000 of salary, that seems, that would be really a bang-out idea, like, incredible candidate that had other offers that we really wanted to make sure that we brought to Arlington. So I think it's a little misleading, because I think when we had spoken pre, I mean, in other negotiations, I think our starting point hasn't been 220,000. So I think that's high, even for a mid-range. I think that's the top of the range, so, I mean, I would almost suggest putting something, just to throw out numbers, like 170,000 to 220,000 range.
If, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I think, and I'm happy to share information with the, with the board on the going rates. I literally just got off the, another Zoom call with the town of Sudbury, which is going to be paying 215,000 for their town manager. The town of, I have all the salary information, or I shouldn't say all the salary information. I have quite a bit of new salary information as of just this past November for a number of communities in the, in the same area as Arlington, and everything is north of 200. Everything is, for base salary, they range from really 215,000 up to 247,000 for the neighboring town of Lexington. The town of Westford just went out, and they advertised at 210,000 to 230,000. So I think if you're, if you're looking to get a candidate that, you know, meets the qualification standards that I think is included within this position profile, I think you're going to have to pay, if you don't want to put 220, you know, I would recommend that you go at least 215, and that, that gives you some sense of, you know, well, if you want to go a range, started a lower salary and just put a plus, that would at least give someone a sense that they'd be coming in at a minimum of 200, let's say, is a number, and move up from there. But the market right now for managers is such that in order to get someone of the quality that Arlington would likely want, you're going to have to put that type of salary number up there.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. And Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having been through this many times, first, I would say with all due respect, it's this board's decision what to list for a range. So we've definitely heard your arguments, and I shouldn't say arguments, your statement, but don't need to hear it anymore in the sense of Arlington, besides Brookline, is really the coup de grace, the plum job in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for up-and-coming managers, and that's pretty well-known. And I would like to do a range also, 170 to 220, 180 to 220. And if you want to put the plus and minus in there, that's fine, only because I don't, first of all, the board has to negotiate the salary, and tying our hands at the very beginning, putting the top number of what I consider for town manager, sort of, for me, handicaps, I think, my ability, number one. Number two, I'd like to see the range, knowing that in all probability, we're going to go towards the higher end versus the lower end of 170, 180, but I think it's also, could send a message, someone, they're a professional, not that they would take it this way, but that, you know, if it says 220, and we're negotiating somewhat, something lower than that, especially if we get a candidate, as the statement says, that will give, and we will, serious consideration to applications from non-traditional candidates who display exceptional characteristics and the necessary aptitude for this position, along with the fact that we're requiring a bachelor's degree with a master's preferred. I'd like to just say master's preferred, because we've always had that, but I'm okay to go along with that. But to me, that plays into having a range if, you know, somebody can look at it, and if it is someone that we take with that one line that we have in there about a non-traditional candidate, and I know what that means in the business world, it could mean anything. We aren't sort of insulting them if we give them, because they are a non-traditional candidate, and perhaps the experience isn't exactly as we've outlined and crafted, but we see great potential and want to do that. I don't want them to feel like, you know, we really tried to go sort of bargain basement and didn't give them that 220. I think having that 220 really handicaps us in terms of negotiating, which everybody on this board, in their current job here, as well as their day-to-day jobs, is very familiar with, and it's really precarious when you get into the, I don't want to be fighting the ghost of 220 plus or minus. So I'd like to go with a range. I'm happy with 170 to 220, plus or minus, 180 to 220, plus or minus, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Decourcy does the ACMI, Mr. Decourcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think, you know, from the, from the earlier comments, I don't think there's going to be consensus putting the 220 plus or minus. I personally, I'm not crazy about a range, but I'm thinking maybe we can work out a compromise here by putting 200 plus. I think we've got to deal with the reality that the next town manager, the first number is going to be a two in my mind, and so I could see something doing 200 plus. That's the midpoint of the 180 to 220, and we're not going to know until we get the candidates in terms of what that is. So I know, I'm familiar with a profile that you did in another community, and I can compare ourselves directly to that community. Earlier this year, we used 200 plus, and if you feel like you need to use a number, I'd be comfortable doing that and taking out the minus, and that gets us to a midpoint here.
Mr. Helman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Lynch. I feel like I now have a better sense of the market, and that's why you're here. So, and understand that my prior comments were based on not having that information prior to this meeting, and that actually may have been helpful. That said, here we are. I think that's very understandable why we need to list a salary in some venues to post the position, and I think that I'm also comfortable with Mr. Decourcy's proposal.
Mr. Heard?
I mean, I think 200 plus or minus is fine, too. Just, I mean, it makes it, mine, it could be 50 bucks. That's under 200,000. So it, I mean, I guess the range handicaps us a little more as I talk it through, but I'm much more comfortable with 200 than 220 plus or minus, because as far as I'm concerned, 220 is just about the max, because we all know there's other benefits that come along on top of what your salary is. So I think 220 would be the max that I'd want to see a new salary regardless of the candidate. So 200 plus or minus is fine for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heard. And Mrs. Mahan?
I'm certainly in agreement with that, and my last question, I promise. The application deadline of January 13th, I'm just curious, and it's not a big deal, but it has a 3:00 PM cutoff time. Is that because of, our consultants prefer that, only because we go till 4:00? And it's no biggie either way. I'm just wondering if that, you know, it can say 3:00, I don't care, but to me, for some reason, I thought that would say 4:00 PM. Is that a big deal to switch that?
Not a big deal at all. We used to, we used to go to 5:00, I think, but we switched it to 3:00, and it's, it really doesn't, I'll tell you right now, it really aren't going to matter, because at 2:59, the resumes will be coming in, some will because at 2:59, the resumes will be coming in, some will come in at 3:02. It's just people somehow wait till the last minute, so we try to get it a little bit earlier, and, but 4:00 is fine.
No, that's fine. And if you wanted to hang around, not that you have to, when we discuss opening the warrant and closing it, it used to only be a week. It's supposed to be four weeks. We give eight weeks.
Yeah.
And it's, it's the same for people, and I'm, should, it's not the same for people, but it's the same for placeholders that still, no matter what, it could be 16 weeks. And that's okay. That's, that's the way it is. So if that's okay with my colleagues, I just, for some reason, the three, the four is all right. Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the draft and make it a final statement for the job application for town manager with the amendments regarding the salary and the close time from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM, with a closing date of January 13th, 2023, at 4:00 PM.
I'm just going to second by Mr. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Mahan. I will certainly respect the views of the preponderance of my colleagues, but I, if I recall correctly, Mr. De Corsi was suggesting that we set the salaries 200 plus and not 200 plus or minus. Is that right, Mr. De Corsi?
That, that was my suggestion, and there was a couple of comments to put the minus in. I personally, I'd prefer just to have the plus, but I think for consensus purposes, if they're, the will of the rest of the board is to put the minus in, I don't feel that strongly about it. But thank you for asking about the clarification.
And I think I would like to, with the chair's indulgence, kick it back to Mr. Lynch, because I think that he had an early comment on that. Do you have advice for us, Mr. Lynch, on that point?
Uh, no, no, I, the, the minus, I, I guess I would agree with Mr. De Corsi. If, for the consensus here, as long as, I will say that as long as there's a two there, that's going to help you get the candidates. If, if it turns out that you're getting, you know, that there's candidates that, you know, aren't as qualified, aren't as experienced, that you feel you can negotiate at a lower salary, that I guess gives you that opportunity. But this job is really going to require, in all likelihood, to get the experienced level, something a little bit higher than that. But it was, as was also pointed out, there are other parts of the negotiations that go into this with other benefits that could be part of the whole package.
Thank you, sir.
And again, as we get, as we get farther along to the actual selection and negotiations, you know, we'll be there with you to provide you with all types of data and information about what's happening in the marketplace, so that you're well-prepared for any negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I mean, well, yeah, this is easy for me to go along with, I mean, so I, I had a conversation briefly with Mr. Lynch, I mean, about, actually, it was Ms. Flaherty, and so I'm interested where they're coming from. I think, I mean, the 200 plus or minus is a, is a good place. Me, actually, Ms. Mahan, I thought he or she was going to be with the fact that it was a Friday, the 13th meeting. And so, so, so the fact that, that they were going at 3:00, to me, meant that they were, they were the ones bringing in, receiving the applications, because as you very well know, we close at noon on Fridays. So on a motion by Ms. Mahan to accept, make, oh, turn this draft into the final version with the stated amendments, and a second by Mr. Helms, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. I mean, so, so second part of the discussion is the creation of the selection committee. And, and so, so at, you know, we have a variety of formats that we can, we can choose. I mean, the consultants have recommended that we keep the size of the committee to seven to nine, and I think that's a, a good number. I mean, and it's really matter how we get there. And so we can have, we could choose the seven members however we want. I mean, my prefer, my preference at this point would be, be for us to choose a member from the school committee, a member from town, and then the five of us, I mean, could choose members of the committee. And, but if you choose yourself, I mean, then you can't choose anyone else. I mean, and, and so I, I know, I'm, I'm not sure if Mr. De Corsi's position has changed, I mean, about him wanting to be, be on the committee. I certainly want to be on it. And I should say, this is a screening committee. I called the selection committee, I should have said screening committee, and I'm sorry for that typo or that misstatement in, in the agenda. I would love it if he were a part of it, I mean, but I almost feel that by saying that, I've already put too much pressure on you, I mean, but I've enjoyed working with you in this capacity so far already, and I really would value your input on it, you know. But then there are other ways we can put together the screening committee, and if folks want, have suggestions for that, I welcome them. It'd be good if we could come to a conclusion tonight, but I think we could put it off until the 21st. But we really want to have this committee, I think, up, I mean, by the 13th, I mean, so that, you know, a week or so after, we have those, those applications, they can get to work. So that's what I'll say for now. I will ask Mr. Lynch or Ms. Flaherty if they have anything else to say before I turn to my colleagues.
Uh, no, I mean, I think that the, I'll, I'll jump in, Chair. I, I think that the number of seven is a good one. You know, the, the purpose of this screening committee is, is, I think you're, the differentiation between screening and selection is significant. The purpose of this committee will be to simply take the applications, working with us, screen them down to a reasonable number that could be interviewed for the purposes of then screening it down further to the finalists that be brought to the board. The, the purpose for these screening committees is that in Massachusetts, the open meeting law does not allow the select board to conduct these preliminary interviews in executive session. And candidates are only going to apply if they have some level of confidence that their application will be kept confidential until they're selected as a finalist, not just a candidate. So that's why screening committees exist primarily, and they, you know, there's, you can have a member or so on the, on the screening committee, but you can't have the entire board serving on the screening committee, or a majority of the board serving on the screening committee. And the, the board can't dominate the, the screening committee. This is supposed to be separate to provide assistance to the, the board in getting the candidate numbers down.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Now, open up to my colleagues. Mr. Hurd?
So, I'm, I'm sure, and saying, so we're going to ask the school committee to designate one of their members, have someone that will, who's going to decide from the town? Us as a board?
That's a good question.
I mean, I recommend Jill Harvey if she do it, but we'll, I mean, I think we'll have to have a discussion about that. Then you and Steve, and then?
Yes.
The, the remaining three of us pick anybody?
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
Ms. Mahan?
I didn't mean to flash peace at you, but peace anyways.
No, that's fine.
Peace be with you.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that. I want to see what the rest of my colleagues do. I just want to, for history's sake, and I don't have any strong feelings, and either way, it may be something that previous boards did, that it was sort of the state of the times, and it's not necessarily a tool that we need right now, but in the previous town managers' searches from Mr. Markey, Mr. Farrington, and then Mr. Sullivan, to Mr. Chapdeline, it got carried over, and that was, and again, I don't have any strong feelings. I actually kind of spoke against it way, way, way back when, the first time, so, but, was that there was an understanding, since the town manager position is under the direct purview, an oversight of the select board, sort of tantamount, our top three responsibilities as a select person. Some would say that there was always an understanding and agreement by the board, and I'd be interested in what my colleagues have to say, and I, I'm okay either way, but the previous three or four times that I've done this was that each, the board member was allowed that if, for some reason, a candidate who applied, whose name did not get passed on from the first round only, individual select person or select persons could advance that person. And that, that's been done in the, the previous, how many have I done? Have I done three or four? I can't even think.
Four.
Four? That's, that's, that was carried, you know, that was done in the first, and it was carried over, and it's just been carried over, I think, just because of, it's always been there before. So I don't have any strong feelings of the way, but I'd like to maybe clarify, if you want to continue, if my colleagues want to continue that, with that, if you don't, that's fine, too.
Well, I should note that the last one, we only had one candidate apply, so there was no screening committee.
Don Markey was, that was a long time ago.
That was before Diane was born.
1967, I think.
Didn't vote for his replacement as a manager. But anyways, so I don't know if my colleagues have any feelings. Do you want to continue that caveat, or it's not needed?
So, Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess just a couple things to follow up on your earlier comment. And Mr. Diggins and I have been working as a subcommittee with Mr. Lynch and Ms. Flaherty, so we've had some discussions about, you know, what, what a committee could look like. And I think as long as my colleagues aren't interested in naming themselves as, as, onto the committee, that maybe gives me a little bit more time to think about. And I'll just be honest, my concern was on a search committee, if there are two members of the select board, and it can't be more than two members, because it'd be a quorum, that we may have an outsized voice on the search committee, and it, it may not be as productive for the, for the other members. So that, that's what I'm dealing with individually, but I think, we're not naming the people tonight. I can think about that a little bit more and talk to Mr. Diggins about that a little bit more. But that would be my only hesitancy on that, as, as to Mrs. Mahan's point. I, I actually was on the search committee, screening committee for Brian Sullivan, and that procedure was used, and actually, there was an issue, I believe, with a candidate who sent something in that did get pulled in later, because it was an issue in terms of when the screening committee received that application, or whether it was received or not. And that seemed, I, I, as a member of the screening committee, I was fine with the Board of Selectmen doing that at the time. I also recall that at that time, I think you would, nobody, Ms. Kelly, did, to be on that screening committee, those five of us, we worked with Ms. Malloy, and, and, you know, was comfortable with that, with that format, and with that understanding that somebody else might be pulled in, because we understood at the end of the day, it's the select board's decision who to hire. So I personally don't, I don't have an issue with that, if the, if the rest of the board is, is fine with that. And I guess I would only ask, ask the chair, when are, when are you looking for us to identify the individuals at, for the 21st?
Uh, no, no, I just want us to make a decision as to, I mean, what the composition, the, the template composition of the board will be, and other, other, other committee will be, meaning, will we have seven, will we have five, I mean, how we'll go about selecting them. So I'd like to have, if we could have that decision done tonight, that'd be great. We could wait until 21st, but then I would like to have the, the members of the screening committee, I mean, selected by the first meeting, you know, in January, which is tonight. I mean, we could fall back to the 23rd if we had to, I mean, but, so, did that answer your question, Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, no, it does. And I, thank, thank, thank you for that clarification. And I also, I, I'm fine with seven as, as the number, and I've made my other points on, on, on the other two. So I mean, at least for purposes of tonight, seven seems fine to me. I think there is a question in terms of the exact language, is it school committee, or it's designee, or is it, you know, how the, how the town person is selected? But I think, I think for purposes of this evening, I think there's consensus that, that seven seems to be a good number.
Mr. Helms?
Thank you. I just like some clarity on what exactly the proposal is taking shape is. I think Mr. Corsi's idea about the school committee or designee is a good nuance to consider. One question I have is the rationale for a school committee member. I think very highly of our school committee. I don't believe that the select board had a, was involved in the screening of the superintendent, which doesn't mean that we can't do it that way, but I think that I'd, I'd like to have some visibility into the rationale for asking them to do that. So that's one question I have. For the second slot, what, we've talked about a town person, does that mean a town employee, or what, or, or is that just another open slot that would be jointly appointed?
So, so I am definitely thinking a town employee, I mean, probably along the lines of a department, a department head, you know, being someone, you know, is going to work closely with the, the town manager. I mean, and if you like, I can answer your first question.
Oh, please, yeah, by all means, yeah.
And so the, I, I understand the asymmetry, but I think that's because that's the way the town works. I mean, the, the town manager does work, I mean, with, with the schools, you know, I mean, and, and so, I understand they have a, a level of independence, I mean, but, but we, through the town man, there is influence, I mean, from the town manager, I mean, with respect to what happens with the schools, even if it's not particularly large. I mean, so I think it'd be good, I mean, to have the school committee have some input in the process. And it's not the strongest argument, but, but it's the argument that I feel comfortable with. Mr. Monsieur Corsi?
Yeah, and just a, maybe a follow-up point to what Mr. Helms said, and it may be cast Mr. Lynch as well, and going back to the search you conducted earlier this year in Watertown, I believe the Watertown superintendent of schools was on that initial screening committee or search committee, and, and maybe that's something between now and the 21st, that rather than the school committee, we think about it as the superintendent or designee, because the superintendent is really the individual working most closely with the town manager. But if, if, Mr. Lynch, if I could ask you, you know, whether it's the search you participated in this year or other searches, do you see superintendent of schools being involved often on a screening committee or a search committee?
Actually, we do. We, we've had that in a number of communities, the superintendent has participated, or a member of the school committee. But it's an interesting point that Watertown was the superintendent, in, I believe it was Ipswich that we just completed, they had the school superintendent, Bourne had the school superintendent. So it is, it is pretty common to have that, similar to having a department head, someone that sort of knows the inner workings. Again, the, the goal here is to help narrow the search down, to then move candidates on to the, to the board for their considerations.
Thank you. I mean, I, I, I think I just know that, that the town manager and the superintendent have weekly meetings, there's a lot of contact, and that may be the way to go, but again, we don't have to decide that tonight, but I think it's, it's, it makes sense to me that there should be a school presence on the screening committee, but I, I, as we've talked it through and listening to tonight, I, I may lean more towards the superintendent or designee. But I mean, I think it's, it's something for us to think about and come back with later this month.
Mr. Helms?
Uh, thank you. I'm sold on that point.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, that, that makes a lot of sense. And I may have been incorrect, actually, in my earlier assertion, that now that I think about it, it's possible that there was a select board member involved in this, in the school search. So that's subject to, to correction in future. And then finally, my question is, do we need to decide, or it sounds like we do, if, if we will provide for any of ourselves to be on this or not, through self-naming or through another process? I know, I know, I think Mr. Diggins expressed a view on that, and I'd be curious if my other colleagues who are more experienced than I have, have a view on the wisdom of that or, or not.
I mean, I don't have any views on the wisdom of it. I certainly have a view of preference, I mean, so as I said, I mean, you know, I'm certainly going to nominate myself to be on that screening committee, and I have also, that's another preference, I mean, but, but it's really up to us to decide that.
I, I will say that it is, there are, there are, there are, many communities do have one or two members that, that will serve on the committee. But again, once you go beyond two, then you get into a forum of the board, and that affects the open meeting law, which affects the way the screening committee operates.
Well, since there's silence, I mean, I'll I'll add a couple of things, I mean, I understand Mr. Corsi's concern about it, having two, indicating a lot of weight of the select board on it, but I think that's also reflective, I mean, of the fact that it really is the select board's decisions, so I don't have a problem with us having, I mean, a high weight in on on the board, you know, and and even along with that, I'm fine with allowing the select board or a select board member, I mean, to ask that someone else that the screening committee did not select, and to be moved on to the next stage of the process, you know, because, once again, it is a select board decision, and I think we 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 five need to be as comfortable as possible, I mean, with the candidates that we take on to the next step, because those will be the ones from whom we choose. I see you, Mr. Hurd.
No, I was just gonna say Attorney Hyman had his hand up, I think he couldn't see it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hyman?
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. I just want to be clear for people watching at home, that essentially, a preliminary screening committee can do the initial screening, an executive session. After that, you can't go into executive session with the preliminary screening committee, and the screening committee very specifically under this body can only have two select board members, so that's what folks are talking about, you can't have more than two on the preliminary screening committee, and the preliminary screening committee can only do the first essentially cut to identify what are the qualified applicants, just so folks, again, watching at home, are clear on what what we're talking about in terms of the dimensions of it.
Thanks, Mr. Hyman. Mr. Helms.
I have an operational question about Ms. Mahan's suggestion, which I I think is actually a good idea, but just operationally, with respect to the open meeting law and that constrains that Mr. Lynch and Mr. Hyman suggested, how does that work, that the select board would still have the ability to bring forth a candidate outside of the screening committee process, but without getting into trouble on that front?
I want to make sure that Mr. Lynch or Mr. Helms, just so he and I are on the same page, has I know you wanted to interject something, do you mind if we?
By all means, go ahead, go ahead, please.
If, is that referred to me?
Yes.
Yes.
The, I I just, an important point I think needs to be made, too, regarding the resumes that are received, the resumes that are received remain confidential only to the screening committee members. There are, these resumes are not distributed outside of the screening committee, there, and so therefore, nobody knows who applied for the position other than the screening committee members, and it it is a, so I think that's that's notable, if there's some, if there's some understanding here that somehow the the board is going to receive these, they they will not, only the screening committee, and the only ones that, the only names that the screening committee sends on are those that they've determined to be the finalists, and that's in accordance with the, and your attorney will, I think, will back me up on this, the, that's in accordance with the rulings of the Attorney General with the open meeting law process. And the other part of that, just the other, just sort of concern, if you will, regarding candidates, because again, I I kind of stress enough what a competitive market it is right now for town managers, hence our discussion on salary, and also just getting people to apply for these jobs, is that people are not going to apply if they don't think that they stand a good chance of getting at least to the finals and having a shot at the job. The concern I have is that if candidates can sort of be put in place outside of the screening committee process, that's going to put a, that's going to put a a freeze on candidates that are going to be applying for this job.
Mr. Diggins, man?
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. So, I heard Mr. Hyman.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. So, again, just to recap, the select board doesn't have to use a preliminary screening committee if it doesn't want to, but if it wants to have somebody go into executive session for the purposes of both maintaining the confidentiality of potential candidates, and also giving the preliminary screening committee a little latitude to talk in an executive session about what they deem to be sort of a qualification under the parameters that you provided, you would have to convene a preliminary screening committee for the initial screening process, and I'll just, again, to be crystal clear, read the law for everyone. It's, the purpose of executive session and a preliminary screening committee is to consider or interview applicants for employment or appointment by a preliminary screening committee if the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants, provided, however, that this clause shall not apply to any meeting, including meetings of a preliminary screening committee, to consider and interview applicants who have passed a preliminary screening. So the preliminary screening committee can convene an executive session to look at resumes, they can have some interviews, including more than one round of interviews potentially, in determining who is essentially a qualified applicant to be presented to the rest of the board. The difficulty in, I think what Mr. Lynch is saying, the difficulty, both practically and legally, if you have resumes being submitted to the rest of the board outside of that, is whether or not the purpose of this executive session exists anymore, because the idea is to keep confidential. I see Mr. Hurd, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, if we kind of simplify this, the screening committee is a committee that puts forth a couple of candidates, and the full board could say, we don't like any of these candidates, and not vote for them, and I think what, I mean, we're talking about disseminating who applied through this screening committee, I think in reality, what we're talking about is somebody that tells me, hey, I applied, and then we don't see the name put forth through the screening committee, that's on an open meeting law violation, that some candidate told me that they applied for the job, and when we, once we vote on this, regardless of whoever, I mean, there's nothing other than bad form, I guess, to to stop any of us from saying, well, you know, I I hear your candidates, but I want to nominate Ashley Meyer to be the next town manager, and I could do that, and I could, if I can convince three of my colleagues that that's the new town manager, so I I mean, I think we're looking at this in a vacuum of the screening committee, like, oh, there must have been a open meeting law violation, that they knew that this person applied, but, I mean, I think in reality, that's how it works, and that's probably how it worked before. That being said, I would envision that we will rely on the judgment of our screening committee and most very likely select someone that the screening committee put forth, but I mean, just as we're talking, to simplify it, I mean, I think we're kind of talking through hoops and ignoring the obvious.
Thank you, Sir Hurd. Well, I hear everything, you know, I, Mr. Lynch, you know, if we, if we don't have, I mean, the option of moving someone that wasn't selected or or chosen by the screening committee, he, well, let me rephrase the question, you said that if we do, it will make it harder to attract candidates, I mean, so, so I'm assuming if we don't, it makes it easier, but then what Mr. Hurd said is that, I mean, we, we still have that option, even if we don't, like, formally say it, I mean, so, so I'm trying to understand that, I mean, if we don't state it, I mean, how is the detriment to the selection process negated?
Well, I think, and again, and candidates watching this meeting tonight, are they know that this, this is a possibility, that they may apply, and that they may be someone who contacts a member of the board down the road and gets their name put into nomination, and, you know, when we have, for instance, when we have internal candidates that are known to be candidates for the position, it makes the search very, very difficult to get candidates, because they assume that the inside candidate has the advantage, and communities have gone through this, where they lose three of their finalists, two or three of their finalists, because it's an internal candidate that's that comes to the forefront. If someone can be brought in outside of the process, that politicizes that process, and that scares candidates off.
Right, right. Did I say?
I've never, I I have to tell you, I I don't, outside of, outside of, you know, a couple of cities that have Plan E forms of government that are highly political, I I've never seen, I don't know if I've seen a a community that has gone this route, pulling someone in that hasn't gone through the process or wasn't brought forward by the screening committee.
All right, Mr. Hurd?
I guess what I was trying to say, that I think will allow Ms. Mahan, I was trying to explain a potential where Mrs. Mahan's suggestion could come into play. I don't think we should put it in writing anywhere, it does, I think we should end the discussion and that's it. It's just, we understand that that is a possibility, and I'm, it's a possibility in any town that's governed by a select board, and any candidate applying should know that, it's not, it's, it can happen, but it is unlikely to happen, but we we're not going to put it down as part of our policy, it it's just, that can happen in any city or town, a search committee proffers three candidates and three select board members, yeah, I don't like those three candidates, and you go back to the drawing board, or you put somebody else up, I mean, I think that's a risk that any candidate's going to have to take. I understand it's a competitive market, I think we put together a good package, I think this is a great town to be a town manager of, so I do anticipate that we'll attract some talent, so, I mean, I'm not worried about that, I think we will find a qualified town manager, but, yeah, I don't, I'm not advocating to put it in writing anywhere, that we are anticipating doing that, and if someone sees the meeting, they see the meeting, but, so.
Ms. Mahan?
Short and sweet, totally agree with what Mr. Hurd said, and with all due respect, this is the select board's process that we're overseeing, that we're choosing for transparency and to continue with what we've done before, to have a screening committee, we've never put it in writing, I can tell you, the four, not counting the current town managers, but the four times I've gone through the process, we've gotten, that that's sort of been a tacit agreement or caveat, and we've never had a problem of attracting, if you want to consult our human resources director, Karen Malloy, the next time you talk to her and ask her what the previous searches were like, we always had anywhere from twenty to forty, twenty to thirty plus candidates in the initial round, so, as I said, Arlington, if you really look throughout the Commonwealth, even with some cities, Arlington definitely is, for a town manager, a very well sought after position, because of the position that the town is in, because of the select board, because of the department heads, because of the schools, so, if you, I guess, we're not asking for that to be codified or put in writing, we're just going to continue with the past practice, and I I think we should move on from there. Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
How many candidates are we going to ask the the screening committee to put forth? Has that been on the on the table? Is that something we need to decide?
I recommend that you ask for three to four candidates.
I'm sorry, can you say again, Mr. Lynch?
Three to four candidates.
Three to four, okay.
I mean, if I could, just just a slight way of clarification, I know this is going back a little bit, you know, I think it's, I'm not sure how, how, and and I'm just providing this information so that there's a full understanding of my experience in this area, you know, I I've I've been in municipal government here in Massachusetts forty years, I'm I'm well aware of the the managers' positions throughout the Commonwealth, and we've, we've now done ninety searches over the last five years, six years, and so we come in with some some experience, quite a bit of experience in this area, so I just, I just want people to understand where we're, where I'm coming from, where we're coming from, where we provide you with this information.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Okay, well, I think we're at a consensus on seven, you know, and and I think we're at a consensus, I mean, that we'll have, I mean, a member of the school committee or the superintendent, and someone from town staff, you know, and then the five of us put up, you know, members for the selection committee, and then we can determine who it is of us that are on it. Mr. Mr. Hurd?
I don't know if my colleagues are ready for this, but I'll make a motion to establish a search committee of seven people, one superintendent or a designee, one town employee, and one person each, as suggested by each member of the select board, with the understanding that no more than two can serve.
Second?
Second by Mrs. Mahan, you know, so.
So we now have two motions pending.
Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Diggins, just a point of clarification, Mr. Hurd, you mentioned search committee, I think we're going to call it a screening committee, so with that?
Screening committee.
Okay.
So amended.
Thank you.
And that second is by Mrs. Mahan. Any other questions, comments?
We just, we didn't really determine how we would select the second spot, but I'm fine, I'm fine with the motion, but it just, I don't know if that needs to be discussed tonight or decided.
What's this, sorry, what's the second?
Who who will choose the second spot? The town employees?
So I think at our next meeting, when we proffer candidates, we'll all come in and say, this is a town employee that we think is, would be too best and convince each other.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this was heard, I mean, that's a, that's a good idea, I mean, it was, I didn't go that next step because I just didn't want to presume, I mean, what we would determine, how we would vote on that, I mean, but that's a good first idea, and it's probably very likely what will happen, you know, so, all right, so, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, just because my brain, I'm not functioning at a hundred percent, did we already vote on the motion that I made, and Mr. Helms seconded of the January thirteenth?
Yes.
I I don't remember doing that, so if that's the case, do you have it down, as Chair, that on this agenda, item five, we have two separate votes, the initial vote by myself and seconded by Mr. Hurd, and then the second vote regarding the screening committee made by Mr. Hurd and seconded by me? So we have two votes to take, right? Or did I fall asleep and we already took the first one?
I'm not recalling, I'm, Ms. Mahan?
So we have to take?
We, we did take the first vote.
We did? Okay, then we're all set, sorry. I didn't cross.
No problem.
Thank you.
You voted yes.
And so, so then, on this this second, so right now, we have a motion by Mr. Hurd, I mean, and you seconded it, Ms. Mahan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I mean, so I think we're ready for the vote. All right, Mr. Hyman?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helms? Yes, this is Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Manamisfo.
Great, thank you, you know, so, on to the consent agenda, you know, so we have the, oh, actually, Mr. Lynch and Ms. Flaherty, thank you very much, I appreciate all your work on this, I mean, I'm very happy with the position statement, and it's been a pleasure so far working with you, and I'm sure it'll continue to be.
Thank you very much.
We'll touch base soon, all right?
Thank you very much, take you to the board, and we'll get, we'll get moving, getting this out on the street. Thank you.
Yes, 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 all right, thank you, take care, good night, you know.
Good night.
So now on to the consent agenda, you know, I have number six, Minnesota meeting, Minnesota meetings, I mean, the November seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting, and the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting, and number seven, I request a special one-day beer and wine license for December tenth, twenty twenty-two, at the Arlington Center for the Arts, private event with, with Jane Byer, and so, can I get a motion?
Move approval.
A motion by Mr. Hurd, and a second by Mr. Helms, Mr. Hyman?
Oh, I have one question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mahan?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just have one question on the cons- I just have one question on the consent agenda, number seven. Just because I never recall seeing this, but on page five of the application, and this is for a gathering of approximately 30 people. I just never seen this before and I don't know if we can just let it go the way it is, tighten it up a little or whatever, but where it says, how will the excess alcohol beverages be disposed of? Traditionally in the past, whatever wholesaler or company brings it in, takes it back. But where it says any leftover alcohol will be distributed to the guests in small amounts and transported in the trunk of their car. We've never done that before, approved that. Is it too late to? I mean, what I would think is the person who's going to be the tip server, and I can't anticipate for a party of 30 that there'd be a lot left. So I guess my question would be through you, Mr. Chair, either to Town Council. I mean, at the very least, I'd like it to say, if we are allowing them to dispense it in small amounts to their guests and to be transported in a trunk, that it says it will be secured or something like that? Or, I don't know if Town Council or anyone can give me any guidance. Am I overthinking this?
I was actually just wondering how they are going to enforce that they put it in the trunk of their car? What if they have an SUV?
And Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the board can place a reasonable condition on it if you want to say that, you know, alcohol shall be secured in a more specific way. I think you could, that you could also say that, you know, you'll limit it to two drinks or three, or whatever you want. If you want to be more specific, I think you can grant it with, you know, conditions that you're making on it, as long as they're reasonable. You could also direct them just to take it with them and not distribute it to guests, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah, I mean, and hey, looks like a party favor. But can, I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but I'd like it to, if we approve this and just say that for the, any leftover alcohol will be secured by the tips server, Sarah Byer, who also will not be drinking at the event and transported by her. Or am I just overthinking this? Should we just let that?
I think it's a good catch on this, so.
So can we do that?
Yeah.
Can I do that, Attorney Heim? Can I just say for how and when leftover alcohol will be secured and transported by Ms. Sarah Byer? Period. Is that okay? Okay, okay, with that change. So, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. And I had noticed that and for some reason I thought maybe I had seen it or that I knew that it was a possibility. And so my question to you, Ms. Mahan, is, is the fact that Officer Rato signed off on it, does that mean that it is legal for that to be done? And we're simply expressing a preference that it not be done?
No, we're the entity that gives the approval for alcohol at this town-owned facility. And we take the recommendations. Anyone can correct me on this if I'm stating incorrectly, but the final vote is ours. I'm seeing nodding yeses to my left, but I think Mr. Hurd has his hand.
I mean, I think where Mrs. Mahan's getting at is that we're responsible for how alcohol is distributed. And a bartender has to be tip certified. They have to make sure that somebody's not intoxicated when they give them alcohol. So if you hand somebody alcohol and they walk off not into the trunk of their car and into, you know, Woodmore Park or something and consume it, it just, it seems very kind of wishy-washy on our part to say, all right, yeah, you know, whatever's left over, just hand it out and have a party in the streets. Not that I'm saying that this is what these applicants are going to do, but I think as a policy, we should say, any alcohol leftovers should be secured and removed by whoever the tip-certified bartender is.
I'm fine with that, you know, so, all right, you know, so, so.
Sorry to the partygoers that won't be walking away with the excess alcohol.
New party favor looking time. Go ahead. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Yes, Ms. Mahan?
Mr. Diggins, shall I take the walkover?
Yes, please.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Also known as the Grinch, yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right, thank you very much. And now on to the next item, appointments. So an appointment to the Commission for Arts and Culture. We have Nicole Cuff. And I see Nicole is in as a panelist. Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
Thank you very much for your willingness to be on the commission, on the Commission for Arts and Culture. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, thanks so much for having me today. So I'm an acoustician, I'm an educator, an artist and a community volunteer. In terms of my work as an acoustician, I design spaces to make sure that users have excellent speech intelligibility as well as excellent musical acoustics. I'm the K-12 market leader at my company, which means that I work closely with our marketing department to communicate our branding and K-12 message to clients. And I'm the face of public and independent schoolwork at my firm. In terms of being an educator, I teach acoustics at Roger Williams University in the Architecture School, and I've done that for the past three years. I'm an artist and I'm involved in community groups with other artists in the Boston area and I regularly support other friends' performances and recording media. I have a history of community volunteering with Little Brothers, Friends of the Elderly, Boston Cares and Windgate. I would love to have the opportunity to serve Arlington and promote the ACAC mission and strengthen my town. I think of beloved, small, local performance spaces like Johnny Dee's and Riles and TT's the Bears that closed pre-pandemic. And I think about how the ACAC can provide even more performance opportunities for local artists to help make up for these venues closing. We can help strengthen the local community, music community in Arlington. I see more local performance opportunities coming up in areas farther outside the city like Lowell, Wakefield, Stoughton and Melrose. And I'd like to be a positive agent for change to bring more performance opportunities to Arlington.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cuff. And so, attorney, my colleagues? Mr. Hurd?
Yep. I will move approval and just say thank you for your willingness to serve. I feel like we say this often, but not at every meeting. We're always taken aback by the quality of candidates that we have to serve on our local committees and how experienced and spot-on experience the members of these committees are. So thank you again for stepping up to serve.
I see Mr. Helmut and Ms. Corsi first. So Ms. Corsi first. So Ms. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second Mr. Hurd's motion and I also want to thank Ms. Cuff. And I was looking at a little bit of your background and even beyond what you have here. I understand that you actually performed at Symphony Hall and you were the director of your, the cordially yours a cappella group at Boston University. So it's always nice to have a fellow terrier here as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Helmut?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. So, yes, yes, I mean, impressive. And the ACAC is just a really great organization. I think you know what you're getting into. And I mean that in the most positive way. And so I look forward to your contribution. And then maybe someday we'll figure out how to put haiku to song. Haiku, so. On, a motion by Mr. Hurd and it's seconded by Mr. De Corsi, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And next we have an appointment to the Clean Energy Future Committee by Amos Meeks. So I see Amos is in. And Mr. Meeks, want to tell us something about yourself?
Hello, sure. So professionally, my background is in material science and applied physics. I finished a PhD from Harvard in 2021. But in terms of sort of climate and activism, I've been pretty involved with things since high school. Most recently, and in particular in Arlington, I was, I joined Sustainable Arlington in 2016. I was co-chair for about two years, involved in a number of efforts there, including, I think, more recently in 2020, I was part of a group sort of spearheading an effort to pass a home rule petition, asking the state legislator to let us sort of create a bylaw that would prevent the addition of new fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. That passed town meeting pretty overwhelmingly and has since gone on to sort of inform the current 10-town sort of pilot program that the state has put together that we are trying to participate in. So I'm excited to join the CEFC. I've sort of been involved in collaboration with them in my work with Sustainable Arlington. I think they've done tremendous work and I think there's a lot more to do. There's a lot coming up with sort of the new stretch energy code that's been created. And that then ties into also this fossil fuel infrastructure. And then continuing to go on to promote electrification and make Arlington as sort of green and low carbon as possible to get to our sort of net zero goals. So thank you very much for the consideration and I'm looking forward to getting to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Meeks.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I'd like to move approval. And as the select board member who's fortunate to currently represent the board on the CEFC, I know that you will find it to be just an absolutely terrific group led by our very capable town staff member and volunteers who have a tremendous wealth of knowledge. Looking at your resume, Dr. Meeks, I think that you are about to add to that considerably and we are very fortunate for you to step up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm looking for a second.
Second?
Second, Ms. De Corsi. Any comments, questions?
All right, well, Dr. Meeks, it's the first time I've seen an entry for Ariza, so it's always a resume. So it's been a long time since I've been to one of those, you know, back in maybe like the early 90s. Good to see they're, I guess, still going, at least until 2017. So I expect nothing but the best from you, you know, because you're a town meeting member from Precinct 3. Precinct 3 delivers and I expect you to keep delivering. So, so, so thank you very much. And so on, a motion by Mr. Helmut and seconded by Mr. De Corsi, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
So we now move to open forum. Acceptant under new circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall be so neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to a presentation to present a concern or request. And so, do we have anyone queued up for the forum?
There's one hand raised at this time. I'm going to promote them now.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Lopczak? I see your audio is coming on. Let me just make sure that I have a clock and turn it over to the gallery view.
Oh, I can.
You don't give me a clock?
I can, I can give you one. Yep, hold on a second.
All right, Ms. Lopczak?
Hi, Beth Malofczak, Russell Street Town Meeting Member. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the great effort that the town has made concerning curating the tree canopy. I was happy to read the announcements this past week on all of the efforts. I know, I know because of my work, paying attention to the Tree Committee, that they put a great deal of effort, volunteers there did, in watering during the extreme heat that we had this summer. And I know how difficult it is to maintain the newly planted, particularly bare root saplings to get them to survive. So I just want to thank everyone on the Tree Committee and DPW and on your committee who support the efforts of these committees in curating and protecting and increasing our tree canopy. It's very much appreciated. I did send you a letter, which I noticed in the correspondence received. I appreciate that, that it was posted. And I would just like to encourage the select board to consider as a potential, perhaps warrant article that some committee could bring up, that any, and when any town land is going to be repurposed, that a protocol be established or a requirement be established that a tree inventory and an environmental impact statement must be done prior to consideration of repurposing. So prior to any project progressing, that that first be established so that the interests of the community, the interests of Arlington, needing its tree canopy for public health and defense in extreme heat and climate change, be fully represented. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity to speak during open forum. It's been a long evening, have a lot of work. And I'll end there and thank you very much.
Lopczak, have a good night. Anyone else, Ms. Meyer?
No, that was it at this time.
Great, thank you. So moving on, the item number 10, election review 2022 and election preview 2023. Ms. Brazil?
Hello. All right, so it's fun to be here in person. I'm going to just touch on a few things since the memo is fairly detailed. I just want to call out a few things. We had three elections in 2022. Things went very smoothly, even including rolling out for September and November the new electronic voter list, the poll pad check-in to the souped-up iPad and printer. And so that was a lot of fun and I think a great success. I've got a lot of election workers saying they'll work full day shifts now that the ending, the end of the night isn't quite so horrifying, counting manually the paper list. So I take that as a huge win to keep some of our most experienced people working the elections. So, you know, each election has its story in, and if sort of if you look at the numbers presented in the memo, the town election did have, you know, lower turnout than we like to see. It was not helped by the state not authorizing vote by mail. So it was only absentee, which is a very restrictive restriction. So that certainly didn't help our numbers. In September, of just the confusion, I think all of the September primaries suffer from the fact that when you get the postcard from the state in July, it's very difficult for you to visualize that you're going to be on vacation the last two weeks of August, which is when I'm going to be mailing you your ballot. So that creates a lot of confusion and so it's difficult for voters to navigate. I'm hoping we all get into a vote by rhythm, vote by mail rhythm over the next few elections and that improves. And then, you know, November had higher turnout than I think the secretary was predicting. Things went very smoothly in Arlington. And I was also really excited to see how much, how well vote by mail worked, high participation and a high return rate. We do track how many ballots we mail, but we also track how many we get back that we mailed. And getting back, you know, most of the ballots that we mailed was great. Only 12% were not returned and that's a really great statistic. It was 30% in September. And that's, you know, feels a little more wasteful. It was 30% in September and that's, you know, feels a little more wasteful. So I was very excited. And then the last thing is if you look at the chart, the right-hand side, the percentages sort of for each election add up to 100 and what you see is that it's about a 50-50 split in person and by mail. And we'll be keeping an eye on that, but that's sort of an interesting statistic and it shows that people really do like voting by mail and it's a great alternative to be able to offer. So looking ahead to 2023, there are several things that I'll be coming back in January and February to ask the Select Board to vote on. Tonight, I would like to just confirm the date of the town election in April. I know the default date in the bylaw is always the first Saturday. The board has the right to change that. I don't see a reason why you wouldn't want to change it, but I suppose I'd like to hear that from the board as well, so that we can all sort of agree on the date of the election and I can move forward. The, we have, we'll have two members of the Select Board on the ballot, three school committee, one town clerk and one member of the Board of Assessors. I've started the process now of looking at vacancies on town meeting. Of course, we don't really know open seats on town meeting until we get past the deadline for current town meeting members to re-up. But we do have a few seats available and so I'll be getting information out to the public about how to run for town meeting so we can encourage people to jump in and do that. State law requires now that we offer vote by mail unless the Select Board votes to opt out. Although it is optional, I strongly believe that we should do a postcard mailing to every registered voter, so I am planning to do that. So I'm planning to do that in late January, so that's sort of how long you all would have, were you to decide that you wanted to vote to opt out. State law allows us to opt in to early voting in person for local elections now and I am planning to offer that, at least on a limited scale. You may remember that the Election Modernization Committee recommended to Town Meeting, which approved it, a plan to do three days of early voting prior to a local election, our town elections. My current vision is it would be Wednesday, Saturday, Wednesday and then the Saturday election, so that that's kind of easy to stick in people's heads and we get as close to the election as we can before we need to stop and actually get ready for the election. And I, I think it's important and the reason for doing the postcard mailing and offering in-person early voting is so that, as much as possible, all elections are conducted exactly the same way. The dates and deadlines will vary based on which election it is, but I want voters to sort of get that rhythm and that understanding about how they best cannot exercise their choices and their options for how to vote. And then the final vote I'll ask you to take will be to specifically authorize the dates for early voting and the police details. Those are all things that you'll have to do. So that's, you know, sort of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about elections.
So Hurd.
So, sorry if I was confused. Are you looking for any of these motions tonight?
Nope. I mean.
I mean, I'd be happy to move that we set the date for annual town election, April 1st, 2023.
Sure, I think we do have that as a placeholder on the agenda, so you have a place to discuss it. Yep. I won't leave until we finish that agenda item.
Well, I retract my motion.
Anyone else? Mrs. Mahan.
Was that a motion to receive, Mr. Hurd? Should I second?
Motion to receive.
Okay, I'll second Mr. Hurd's motion to receive. And I just have one question to you, Mr. Chair. And it could be that the state laws changed and I haven't paid attention, but traditionally in the past, when we, because I went around to some of the polls, not all of the polls, saw new workers, so thank you. It's much appreciated. I know how difficult that job is to fill. Just about all of them don't do it for the money, so.
Yep.
They do it for the civic engagement and participation. But I had it in my head that whenever we have new election workers, the names are forwarded to the Select Board.
Yep.
And we, has that been, because I don't, I don't recall seeing them for like a year or two now and I know we've had new people. Has the state law changed or are we behind? Do we need to do that and play catch-up?
Both are true. I am behind in doing that and state law has made it much more clear that when you get to within a few weeks of the election, the town clerk just needs to get it done. But I do, I do want to come back and have everyone formally appointed and I discussed with.
No, no, if you could, in my head, for some reason, I'm thinking.
Just add that to the list.
It's been like two years, maybe three.
Yep, absolutely.
So I don't want someone to say, yes, we have that latitude because an election's coming up and they say, well, it hasn't been, it's been three years.
Absolutely.
So we'll play catch-up on that. Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize.
No, it's a very good question.
I should have caught it sooner.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hellman.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for your patience waiting tonight and for your work through these. As you say, each election has a story and each of these did. And, you know, hats off to you and to your team for these going well. You've had a lot flying at you. Things have been changing on the ground and your adaptation to that has been exemplary and has served the residents of the town really well. Just one question, how are we doing with people who are returning the ballots by mail with respect to technical errors like failing to sign the envelope and, you know, can you give us an idea of how often that's happening? And is there an opportunity, if those are flagged, for, do you reach out to voters for them to remedy that? Kind of how does that work? What's yours?
Yes, as much as possible. You know, sort of in the early going, we definitely contact them, mail them a second ballot with a rejection letter and explain, you know, what they did wrong and what they need to do to fix it. As you get closer to the election, that becomes less and less practical, in which case we get, we get a lot of calls and track my ballot is updated daily and that helps people understand. They can say, you know, why was my ballot rejected? What are my options? And then at that point, you know, they were usually in the middle of early voting and then, of course, you know, they can always vote on election day. So we work with voters. There's, there's always some, it wasn't a particularly high number in this election. I think people are, are getting better.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Corsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Brazil, for the, the report here. It's very interesting in terms of seeing the trends. And just one question on, and I'm happy to see that the percentage went down dramatically between the primary and the general election from 30% to 12% for ballots of people that requested ballots and they weren't returned. Just wondering if you have, and this is more for the September primary, maybe, of the 30%, do you know what percent of those people actually showed up to vote? Or was it, that's because it's about 2,300 ballots that wouldn't have been returned. And I don't know if you have that information. Can I ask you for it after the meeting?
Yeah, I'm not, I'll have to figure out if there's a way to get that information out of the database. It's not an obvious answer that, it's not a standard report, but there may be a sort of a backend way to look at that. I do think in September, the, a lot of the non-return ballots just didn't get to the voters, is my best guess. I think there's a lot of confusion with mail forwarding in August. There's a lot of, I think there were a lot of days where the regular mail carrier's not there and it takes longer, you know, they're on vacation as well. So, I mean, I just think late August is an awkward time in general to be voting by mail. And I think that's really.
Sure.
What we learned.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. You said something earlier about how, there was something about the process being that made the election workers happy with the way the evening ended and what was that?
So the, the old way to end the election night was to take the paper voter list that, where all the names had been crossed off and to manually count and add up the total number of voters. And it's very difficult to get that accurate. And in a perfect world, you want that number of voters checked in to match the number of voters, number of ballots you have in the tabulator. The poll pads, just it's a click of a button and you run the summary report and then, and then you know exactly how many voters were checked in on the poll pad. And so it's, it's much more efficient and it automatically, for a primary, does the breakdown by party. And so, you know, it increases speed and accuracy at the end of the night, which is a great blessing.
Okay, I just missed the, what was it that allowed that to be done more easily? Thank you. And my other question is, how many, do you have a sense of how many people get their ballots, return their ballots late? Like they put their, they mail their ballots on that day, you know, as opposed to having them in to us by eight o'clock?
It's not, it's not a whole lot. And it's, it's, it's kind of screwy the way the state tracks it. So I don't, I don't really have totally good numbers for that, but it isn't, there are, I mean, yes, it's, it's of the ballots, you know, sort of, those are, the problem is they're rejected rather than not returned because they arrived late. And so it's sort of a different report and then the, the apples and the oranges are tricky to track. But that's a good statistic to try and track over time, so I will add that to the list. Yep.
No matter whether it's a big enough amount, well, we want to try and get everyone to vote.
Of course.
Probably, you know, so, I mean, it's a little bit, I mean, it's not our fault that the law is as it is, you know, but, but to the extent we can, you know, make the effort to educate people better, you know, so that they, but it's not a huge problem then. It doesn't require like a emergency response, for lack of a better phrase. So, so thank you for that. So, so anything that you, you need from us tonight? This is kind of like a repeat of what Mr. Hurd asked, you know?
No, other than for the.
Right, the election date.
Yeah, the election date and that's all I need for elections.
Okay, great, great. So, so on a motion to receive by Mr. Hurd and a second by Mrs. Mahan, any other questions or concerns? All righty, Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Corsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hellman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
Mr. Janamusville.
Great, you know, so, so, you know, so next on the agenda is the presentation of the town clerk study, you know, so, since, yeah, since you're going to hang around for item 12, we'll just go in order. So, so we, we see the study, you know, probably at this point like six weeks ago. It was a good read then, it was a good reread, you know, this weekend, you know, and so I think we're pretty well-versed in it, so maybe something brief and we can entertain.
Yep, absolutely. I will just touch on just a few things that really sort of stood out for me. So I asked for the study for two sort of broad reasons. One is to sort of, I think it's good to evaluate whether we've, sort of, we in Arlington have the job description for the town clerk right and whether we want to make any changes to how we distribute the job duties. And then, of course, the second question is whether we want to convert the position from elected to appointed. So pages six and 12 have, you know, that very helpful summary of the findings, so I'm certainly not going to read them out loud. Findings one, two and three speak generally about the complex nature of a job like mine where all of the duties are spelled out in state law and regulation. And it gets interesting that the Select Board, under the current election law, has to take so many votes around elections. That's sort of a trend that, that we're seeing in the way they're writing the election laws now. And I will note that I do read sections of state law nearly daily and I found the statistic in the report fascinating. 451 different sections found in 73 chapters in state law apply to my job. So it's, it's, it's a substantial issue, you know, sort of facing town clerks. Findings four through six, talk a little more about the comparisons to the communities that they looked at in the study. More than two-thirds of the 34 communities studied have appointed clerks and that trend to appointed clerks has sort of been spreading across the state. It is more common in communities of a similar size to Arlington to have an appointed clerk. And no community that has converted the position has sought to undo that change later. Findings seven, eight and nine, talk a little bit about the best practices that are found sort of in nearly all communities across the state. The first two are not currently true in Arlington and I, for finding number nine, I have now taken over complete management of election workers. So now we're on to the findings that are specific to Arlington summarized on page 12. Findings 11 and 12 talk about the challenge of using elections as a performance review. It is rare to challenge a sitting clerk, usually, you know, since 1975, that's happened in Arlington when a clerk retires and then multiple candidates run for the seat. A lot of the work that town clerks do isn't visible to residents and so candidates are talking about things during their campaigns that are fairly abstract to most people. Findings 13 through 15 come out of interviews with officials and so they're fairly subjective, but obviously specific to Arlington. And finding 17 notes two areas that are commonly managed by town clerks. And so, you know, focusing on the first question of reevaluating the job expectations Arlington has for its clerk, I just find the study very, very helpful. I am not looking to take on public records requests, but I have thought about ways that we might be able to improve the coordination of agendas and some of the open meeting law requirements. It's not in the study specifically, but illustrating similar issues, I would like to take a look at conflict of interest law compliance and committee appointments. I know committee appointments are being looked at in the context of the equity audit and I do think that better records and a way of sharing them between my office and the appointing authorities could make some improvements. And so I'm excited to sort of see the results of the equity audit and continue that conversation. The question about appointing a clerk is really for the Select Board to start. I think Arlington would be better served by having an appointed clerk, one who was sort of fully integrated with town hall. A clerk working alone can't really make complex things happen and an elected clerk can choose not to take on specific tasks that are common to the job descriptions in most towns. So that's just not a good way to run a department or an election. So I am recommending tonight that the Select Board put forward a warrant article and then Town Meeting will vote whether to put that question to the voters on a ballot question a year later. So that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. So turning to my colleagues, questions, comments? Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Town Clerk, for all this information that you put together along with the Collins Group.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't have it on the first page. Is it in here? And if I missed it, I apologize. I usually pride myself on reading every word. I'm just having trouble retaining everything lately, but that'll correct itself. I know you said of, I think you said two-thirds of the communities surveyed have appointed Of the 34 communities, 22 of which have appointed clerks that were surveyed somewhere in this report, what cities and councils were. I missed it. What page is that?
I think, so the statistic is.
Sorry.
The finding on page eight and nine.
Yeah, I have that.
Yep, and then I think there, the charts, the appendix in the back breaks out.
Okay, so I have to go through with the A and the E. But how do I know which 34 were used?
So I think the, the last page, oh, which are this, which are this? Um, so I think the, the last page, um, oh, which are this, which are the specific municipalities? Um, I'm sure they're listed, um-
You know what? You can get that to me.
Yeah, it's pages nineteen and tw- it's, it looks like pages nineteen and twenty call out a lot of that. Um, so, yeah, but we can, I can get you a list of exactly which-
Yeah.
-communities.
Pages, yeah. Um, well, of the thir- I mean, I see like nine or ten there, but there were thirty-four surveyed, so I'm just, just curious what they were, um, just in case I want to use them for future comparisons.
Sure.
But then I also noted that, um, this report noted that a hundred and fifty-three of the three hundred and fifty-one communities have, um, appointed clerks, so whereas the twenty-two of the thirty-four surveyed have appointed clerks for two-thirds, the actual number of the total three hundred and fifty-one of one fifty-three, I'm terrible at math, is like thirty-two, thirty-three percent, and I can be corrected on my math, that, um, have appointed clerk, meaning the remaining, um, which is the larger number, um, have elected. So, um, I'm, I'm not going to make a motion from myself because I'm like the appointed clerk. It's sort of been something that's, uh, I won't say since I started on the board in nineteen ninety-nine, but probably about a decade after that, it, it's come up in various forms, and, um, I'm not saying that it's something that shouldn't be considered, and, um, and, and, and am I correct that if you wanted to as town clerk, you could, uh, submit the warrant article to go to town meeting, or no?
I mean, I, I don't know. Um, I do know the select board has traditionally done, um, the conversion articles.
I'm, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, please, please.
I think it's likely that the town clerk could request a warrant article as an elected official. Um, obviously, we've had warrant articles in the past submitted by the town treasurer and other folks who, um, are elected. Obviously, it would still be a matter that would be before the select board for hearing.
Right, so, then I like that route that we've kind of done before, so, um, I'll get to you on what those other thirty-four, but-
Sure.
Just, just what I have, what's here, is here from the, the Collins Center for Public Management. I now see their name, I should have kept that page open. Um, the vast majority have, um, elected town clerks, and, um, that's something that I, I'm just one person would like to consider on what, so, um, and, uh, I'd be happy to also move receipt of, um, this report from the town clerk in, in the Collins Center for Public Management.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Anyone else? Um, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I happily second the motion for receipt and offer my appreciation for the report. I think it's really thoughtful. Um, I think it makes some compelling points that the job of the clerk has changed a lot. It is a lot more complicated with the recent changes, very positive changes in election law. Um, I think it is a more professionalized position than it used to be, so I welcome the discussion. I think that we should have it. Um, I look forward to listening carefully to people with different points of view on the merits. Um, and I think that, I, you know, agree with Mrs. Mahan, I think it'll be good to dig into the thirty-four municipalities. You know, the Commonwealth has three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, I believe, and they're all really, really different. Some of them are really, really tiny, some of them are like Boston. Um, and, um, so for me, the important thing that I will think about as a select board member, and I hope that my town meeting colleagues would think about if we have an article, is what's the apples-to-apples comparison here? You know, what's the best way, what's the best yardstick? And I don't know the answer to that. I think the report has, has a point of view, and I look forward to digging into that and having future discussions with you and with others about it. But I think this is a really good starting point for that discussion, and I think we'll have a good one.
Thank you, Helmut. Side hand, Mr. Hurd?
Yeah. Um, thank you for the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
I think the report certainly makes a compelling case, and I think it, this is a, something that's been talked about for more than a few years. So, I mean, I think this will at least warrant moving it forward to a town meeting to talk about and see what town meeting thinks, and then ultimately has to go to the residents anyways. So there's been, there's plenty of input and discussion before we get to that point, but again, I think the, the report is compelling to that point, but to Mrs. Mahan's point, there, this counterpoints to any, any point that gets put before us, so I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and I, I look forward to the discussion as well, and, and, um, I, I found the, the report interesting on, on a number of the different findings, and I think even before we get there, I, I think it would be helpful, and this isn't whether the, the appointed elected question, but on the public records access officer, that I found very interesting because the majority of other communities, the clerk's office is, is the access officer, and in talking to Mr. Feeney, um, we receive about six hundred public records requests per year, and he's coordinating all of them, and, and a lot of them he needs to coordinate between different departments, but I, I'd like to see in the short term, and I'm sure there's dialogue, because I know you're talking to different people in town hall, just in terms of, is there a way that that can be, that, that burden on him frankly can be allocated, and, and, and what's the best way to do it? Because we get a number of those requests, and I, I think from my understanding, unless it's a request that has to do with the clerk's office, he's coordinating, um, those responses. And I did find it interesting in the posting of the meeting agendas, I, I think from everything I've heard, it seems like committees and, um, various groups that are posting meetings are doing it on their own. I think you're overseeing that or, or checking to make sure things are posted as opposed to just putting it on the bulletin board. I, I didn't, you, you're shaking your head. I don't know if that, that's an area that, that it probably needs more, um, coordination maybe as well.
Yes. Uh, do you want me to answer briefly?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
So, yeah, it is, it is complex. Um, I, I certainly understand the reasons why Arlington moved to a, I'll call it a distributed system, where, uh, you know, staff liaisons, um, facilitate the posting for the committees that they support. Um, uh, and then we do post, uh, paper agendas on the bulletin board. I'm fairly sure, however, that Arlington took a vote and that the, uh, online agenda is the one that counts. Um, so the paper, the papers version that my office, you know, facilitates by stamping isn't the official legal version, and that's where it starts to just get muddy, and that's the muddiness I dislike. And so, um, you know, that's part of what I want to look at, um, and, you know, make sure that we've got a robust system that, um, that we understand and that, um, I can do everything I can to support, um, compliance.
Okay, thank you. And just, and aside on, uh, footnote two, when you referenced the four hundred and fifty-one different sections, I was thinking that's gonna be a very long footnote, but I was happy to see it's, it's just a reference of where they're accumulated.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. Yes, I was thinking about the agenda, um, aspect too, because, I mean, I mean, when I have to, um, because it's the committees that I work on agendas for, I mean, usually go through planning, I always feel badly asking planning, you know, to, to post the agenda, because we know how busy they are, I kind of feel that there are other things that it can do, it can do, uh, uh, and not that it's not, not that the clerk couldn't do that also, not hard that the clerk doesn't have other things to do with his or her time, I mean, I think it would be good if it was just one person that was, um, responsible for, for doing it all, you know? And so, I mean, even if, if, even if nothing changes, would that be something that could be pulled into the clerk's office?
I mean, you can, yeah, I mean, you could pull anything in. Um, it, it would be a lot of work if we're including, um, right now it's distributed, so there are, you know, like twelve different people, um, who are going through all the steps to get it up, um, on the website, um, you know, sort of the backend for the websites a tad, um, persnickety. Um, so it would be, if we were to move it into the clerk's office, I would recommend that we, um, contemplate, um, different ways of doing it. The towns that do it, um, tend to have, the official version that's posted on the website is a scan of a document with a date stamp. That creates problems, having talked with Joan Roman, our public information officer with ADA compliance. So this is a extremely messy and complicated problem to solve, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to look at it and find ways to do it better, which is my goal.
Right, right, right. I mean, that technical thing seems, the technical aspect though seems like it will be the case regardless of whether it's elected or not, it's really mattered figuring out how to do it. I was really just trying to understand if we have the resources now, I mean, if we didn't change the position to an appointed position, you know, to, to pull that function into the clerk's office. And so, I'm gonna ask the question again, I mean, do we have the resources or we have to get more resources?
We might need, um, we might need another staff person or, you know, I, I don't know if it'd be a full FTE, but I'm not sure I could do that on top of what we do now. But until you look at sort of where the efficiencies are, um, that's tough to say.
Gotcha, gotcha. And so, um, is there any sense of how much, I mean, the appointed clerks are paid?
Um, I don't have that data. I mean, there, there are, um, salary surveys that are done, and, um, I can certainly, uh, get them from the Mass Town Clerks Association, um, with current numbers.
Do you have a sense?
Um, I'm, I am underpaid in comparison to appointed clerks, so.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, thank you. So, well, look, I mean, um, I think the report's compelling, as Mr. Hurd said, you know, I look forward to discussion because I really like to see the counterarguments, I mean, if there's a counterargument that can change how I feel about, you know, where this report is headed, I mean, that's gonna be a powerful counterargument, I'll learn a lot, um, from it, you know, so, so, um, yeah, so, yeah, wow, it's a really eye-opener. I mean, the only reason my eyes weren't opened even more is because I was interviewed, one of the people that was interviewed, and so I got a real sense of like the, the issues that we have with the elected position, you know, and, kind of like, I'm pro, I'm pro-democracy, I'm all about elections. I just really think that we need, I mean, there'd be some, some kind of like training or something for candidates, you know, so that we kind of like increase the quality of candidates. And, and I say that as someone, you know, who ran for select board, and it's like, I, I could have benefited, I mean, from, from some, some like kind of training beforehand or something, and, uh, and so, so, um, so, so, yeah, I mean, so, so, yes, this is such an important position, I mean, that I think, I mean, we need to make sure that we have the highest caliber person in the position, you know, and I think we get that with the appointed, because certainly when we look at the people that we appoint to commissioners, I mean, we really make sure that they are qualified for the commissions, I mean, and so I'd like to make sure that we have a really qualified clerk, you know, so, so thank you very much for this, you know, and, and, uh, we'll be, um, we'll be back, I mean, to deal with this one way or another, um, sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much.
So on a motion to receive by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. Helmut, um, any other questions, concerns? All righty, um, Mr. Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Sorry, I keep stepping on you, Mr. Heim, you know, uh, so, uh, next on the agenda is, let me pull it up, sorry, um, I think it's the vote on the election day or determine the date of the election. Yes, vote of, um, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three annual town election. So, Mr. Heim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think that the board's familiar with the, uh, process and the legal parameters. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Mr. Hurd?
I'd like to motion to set the annual town election for April first, twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. Helmut?
I feel like I'm in school. Second.
All righty, you know, so any questions, comments?
Eight to eight, just-
From eight AM to eight PM.
In accordance with the bylaw.
And I second that change, clarification.
All right. All righty, so on a motion to set the election date for April first from eight AM to eight PM, being by Mr. Mr. Hurd and a second by Mr. Helmut, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, great, moving right along now to opening the town warrant, you know, so, uh, for annual town meeting twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. You all have my memo, you all have done this, uh, several times in the past, at the minimum. Um, the proposal before you is to open the town warrant this Friday, uh, December ninth, and to have it close the, sorry, why is my computer freezing up here?
Friday, the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh of January, all in accordance with the town's bylaw. Uh, the board will note that the notice of your intent to open the warrant has already been posted in compliance with the bylaw. The timing this year was a little funky, so it was posted at, um, um, different municipal locations around town.
Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move that, uh, we, um, in accordance with the law and the five days, um, preamble to it, that we open the warrant on Friday, December ninth, twenty-twenty-two, and it shall remain open and close on Friday, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
May I add just one thing?
Yes, yes.
Would, uh, Mrs. Mahan be amenable to also just stating that the town meeting will commence its business on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty?
Can I do that in the same vote? Okay, and, and that, as Mr. Attorney Heim has stated, that town meeting will start the fourth Monday in April, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, in accordance with the bylaws, for start time.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, I mean, on a motion by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. DeCoursey, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. And so, moving right along, item fourteen, discussion, increasing engagement with the Arlington Tree Committee, and so that's me. So I had a very, very conversation with, um, my colleague, Mr. Helmut, you know, who is the, currently liaison to the Tree Committee, being, and, and, um, I mean, what I would like to do is first off, get, I mean, an update, I mean, on, um, what's been going on, um, with trees since we developed a tree management plan, and I, I'm impressed with the plan, you know, and my understanding is that the goal was to have a net increase of one hundred trees per year, um, uh, in order to try to get us back to the amount, the level of tree canopy that we had, in, maybe like nineteen, well, I guess it was like ten or fifteen years before, um, the tree management plan went into effect. It was understanding that we couldn't, I mean, increase our tree canopy as it was like forty or fifty years ago, but we're at least gonna try, I mean, to get back to where we were like about twenty years ago. Uh, and, and so it'd be interesting to see where we are, uh, but more so, I mean, I'd like for us, the town, to really have a conversation, I mean, about how we want to deal with the conflict often between trees, I mean, and other things, I mean, be they, I mean, uh, the Veterans Memorial Park or, um, development, I mean, there's only so much we can do, I mean, right now, Article sixteen, you know, or, I forget, well, there's a bylaw, I think it's number sixteen, that handles, I mean, what we do with trees with, um, in the, the set, setback, you know, uh, but, I mean, if someone, you know, decides to cut down a bunch of trees in the backyard, there's really not much we can, not actually really can do about it, I mean, if, um, a developer comes along and wants to, uh, do a development and that involves ch- cutting down some trees, well, we, there's a limit to what we can do, you know, I mean, I think there should be a limit to what we want to do, but if we as a community, I mean, really want to see more trees, I mean, then, then we can do that, you know, we just have to pay for it, you know, and, and I think it would be good for a community to decide, I mean, well, what is it that we want to do when it comes to maintaining trees or increasing trees and also achieving, uh, our other goals, I mean, so what I am coming to you all to do is to ask, I mean, I think, I think permission's not quite the right word, but to, to, to get a sense from you how you feel about me going to the Tree Committee, being, and engaging them more on this issue, I mean, and I'm not going to be replacing Mr. Helmut, uh, on the committee, I would just be, uh, interacting with them, uh, more, uh, and so they would get two select board members, um, working- working with them, because this is important, I mean, and so, so that's the purpose of the discussion. I'll open it up for questions, comments, concerns?
So, are you asking us to comment on you talking, talking to the Tree Committee?
Yes, yes, I mean.
With no action, specific action items, correct?
No, I mean, it's more so to, well, well, one thing I will ask them to do is to, and perhaps it would be the Tree Warden, is to give us an update on what has happened since we initiated a tree maintenance plan, I mean, so that would be one action that would come out of this, you know, and beyond that, it would just be to have a conversation to understand, I mean, what their approach is, what they're thinking is with respect to creating, I don't wanna say a policy, because that's perhaps a strong word, but having, developing a way to have a conversation with the town about how we want to handle increasing our tree canopy or maintaining it when we also want to do development.
Yeah, I guess that's a longer conversation. Yeah, I mean, I think, I certainly understand where you're coming from, Arlington is recognized for its tree canopy, its urban coverage, and it's our immense efforts that we've been doing over the past couple of years to increase tree canopy, and I think, as you said, there's limits to things that we can do, and I think people recognize that, some more than others. So, I mean, I think we are on the right track, I think we do very, very, very well maintaining our current tree canopy and in our efforts to replenish tree canopy, so I guess I don't know what, I mean, if there's more we can do, we're open to suggestion, but I don't have anything specific to add right now.
Mr. Helms?
Thank you, I did, this was a good opportunity to reread the tree management plan, which I did in the last few days, and then I had a conversation with one of the co-chairs of the Tree Committee, and, you know, it's an excellent document represented, I can't believe it's been five years since that's published, but there's a lot of research that went into it, in fact, my husband reminded me that he was one of the volunteers that Ms. Burden led on the tree survey that many years ago, it was a really great experience, and it set some really good context and history for the loss of Arlington's tree canopy over the last few decades and the goals to replenish it. And one of the things that she and I talked about, and I think agreed upon in principle while not representing the board or representing her colleagues in the committee, is, is the benefits of updating that plan or providing a supplement or providing a report that would just give the select board in the town a window into the progress and how we're doing. And I'm not gonna put Mr. Poehler on the spot, but I would recommend the, the latest town manager updates from ACMI News last week where he happened to give some of last year's data about our net positive tree plantings over, over loss, and that was encouraging news, it said to me that this is already on, is a priority for him, and he brought it up in the interview, it's, it's, it's very much a priority in the town government, so I was really glad to see that and grateful for that, Mr. Town Manager. I think for me, and any, any select board member can talk to any Tree Committee member at any time, I don't know that the action is necessary for that, I think that a more useful discussion would be if this board has any suggested direction to give the Tree Committee, that could be worthy of our consideration, either formally or informally, such as a request to provide, you know, perhaps after town meeting settles down, you know, provide some kind of a written update to that plan, just as, as a report, and, and I think the final thing I would say is, I think what's missing for me in this conversation is the role of our Tree Warden, who is a town employee. As I read the Tree Committee bylaw, their role is to support the Tree Department, I don't think that, you know, they're not a policy board, we are, you know, when it comes to these decisions, I absolutely welcome and value their expertise, but I tend to view them as supporting of the Tree Warden principally, and I think that for me, any of these conversations really need to start with that professional that we employ to manage the Tree Department and to implement the tree plan, because I think that the structure of the committee is, is such that they support, in this case, him and his work. So, those are just my thoughts, I don't know if that's particularly actionable, I don't, I don't think they'd contravene anything that Mr. Diggs suggested that we do, but that's how I would look about structuring some of this.
Thank you, Mr. Helms, anyone else? Well, as you said, Mr. Helms.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I saw Mr. Poehler's hand, yes, thank you.
So, the, the tree management plan did call for an increase of 2,000 trees, basically at 100 trees a year, net gain, over the last four years, we've had a total increase of 590 trees, so, or about 190 ahead of schedule. Sometimes, you know, we have ups and downs because of weather or microbursts or so forth, but on, in general, we have done a good job of planting trees here, and in my remarks the other day, I also noted that in addition to the trees that are being planted under this plan, we've had about 60 trees planted on private land with the help of the Tree Committee, and I don't remember the exact number right off the top of my head now, but there have been other trees that have been planted through other funds over and above that, so I think the town is making great progress, we set out a goal for how many new trees we wanted to set out, and we are ahead of that goal, so I just wanted to inform you and the public of that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, this is one of those cases where, I mean, I, I generally do tend to be the permission first rather than, you know, asking for forgiveness, I mean, and so, so, I mean, I realized that I could talk to anyone, I mean, I really wanted to bring this up so that it's not like, well, Len's just going off on his own, doing something that the board might eventually have to like weigh in on, I mean, I wanted to let you know that I wanted to have this conversation and to get some input from you about maybe directions in which the conversation could go, I mean, so, so, I guess more so than anything else, it's a kind of a courtesy item on the agendas, so I thank you for having this little bit of a conversation with me, so, we'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion and potential vote of referrals to the Public Memorial Committee, and they also are gonna be seeking a new member, I mean, so, so, this comes from, you know, primarily from the article in the previous town meetings warrant regarding naming a section of Broadway that has no name after one of the Magliosi brothers, and, and so, we voted no action, well, actually, well, town meeting voted no action on it, I mean, with the understanding that we would take that to the Public Memorials Committee, I held back on pushing it forward because I wanted to understand more about the Public Memorials Committee and, and, how it, how it does what it, did what it, how it does what it, how it functions, you know, and, and so, it took a little while for that to happen, I finally got, had a conversation with the chair, I mean, and, and I did see their, their roles, I mean, and they are, I think they're pretty good, and, and so, I would, at this point, like to move forward that request, we also got one in just recently regarding renaming Downing Square, and also asked for them to maybe weigh in and give us some ideas about how to potentially memorialize Marika Pelka, so, that's where the potential vote is, I mean, so, I now turn it over to my colleagues. Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, first of all, I suggest that the Downing Square matter might be better, best reserved for the correspondence received item, since, since that's a specific item to suggest, I think, and that's your discretion, of course, Mr. Chair. One question I have is, and I spoke with Ms. Mar about this earlier today, I just requested some, some clarification, I think this committee has been, by its very nature, incidental in its, in its requirements to meet, and that's just as it should be, but I, I suggest that we complete our review of the membership and the terms of office, I think there's maybe a disconnect between what's published and what's happened in the public record in this case, so I think that in addition to making referrals, I would suggest that, that we evaluate the membership to make sure that everyone's up to date, and, you know, if there are any reappointments or new appointments needed, that would be a useful thing, and, and I had one other thought, it just left my mind, so I guess I'm done.
Well, that's my fault, did you wanna say something else about the makeup of the committee?
I'd sure put support and it'll come back to me, so, yeah, thanks, that's right, no, no problem.
I see, I'm seeing several, maybe I'm seeing everyone's hands, I'm certainly seeing Mr. Hurd, I mean, Mrs. Mahan, I saw Mrs. Mahan's first, so I'll go with Mrs. Mahan.
Sort of to piggyback on what my colleague, Mr. Helms, was saying, again, I'm going by my memory, and something could have changed, although I was right about the election workers, we haven't seen it in three years, but could we, it's my memory that, and if anyone knows the correct information, they can say I'm right or wrong, I'd definitely welcome it, I believe with the Public Memorials Committee, unless the membership, committee members, membership has been changed, I seem to have recall in my head that once members get appointed, they stay appointed, I wanna say until they resign, does anyone remember that about the Public Memorial Committee? And, and what I would say is, if that's the case, if I'm correct, that, so, one of the things I like about reappointments is if there's a new person on the board, or if you're not a new person, but you've been here and you just haven't had a chance in three years to thank that person, you know, that's sort of an opportunity, or if you, so, I guess what I would say through you to the chair, I'm pretty sure my memory is correct, and I would like to have the discussion that if my memory is correct, that Public Memorial Committee members, once they're appointed, they're not reappointed, they stay appointed until, I don't wanna say ad infinitum, I can't think of a.
I just remembered my point.
If, if that's the case, that we have a discussion, because I'd like to have it comport with other committees, whether it's initially might have to be staggered, because everyone would come up at the same time, but if it is that you're appointed and you're, you're a jet for, a jet for the rest of your life, I'd like to.
All right, so.
I'm done with that, thank you.
I think I would go to Mr. Mahan for him to determine for us, is that correct, Mr. Mahan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I actually have the, the bylaw here in front of me, if that's, and, and it actually calls for three-year terms, and similar to other committees, the members stay on until their successors are qualified and appointed, so.
Oh, it does say.
So, they're effectively, you, you remain on the committee until, until successor is appointed, duly appointed and qualified is actually the term of art there.
So, Mr. Helms, and then, and then, I think Mr. Hurd had his hand up, so, Mr. Helms?
Thank you, actually, that, I'd be helping me remember my last point, and that was, what I was, I wanted to clarify what I was saying, that I was actually aware of, of the, of the bylaw Mr. DeCoursey mentioned, and just that the terms of office don't necessarily roll over for the full three years, it's just that the person stays on unless we do something, so both of those things are, are true, but I wanted to communicate awareness of that, not to suggest that we do anything other than we just check that, because I think if we're reactivating the committee and ask them to do work, it would be a good time to come up to date with that, even if it's nothing more to do, reappoint and to thank.
Mr. Corsey?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I think on, on this, and I took the agenda item, I, I have a couple things to say on the request for a referral, at the time we get to that in correspondence received, so with the board's indulgence, I'd rather not vote on that referral as part of this agenda, I'm not gonna move it, and, you know, if another member wants to, I suppose we can address it now, but I, I think for this item, I think we need to take a look at what the status is of the appointments, but I'd also like to ask, Town Council, who hasn't been given an opportunity to do that in advance of the meeting, is, you know, help us take a look at the language here in terms of, you know, the charge here is that the committee should be the official source for memorialization, and I, I didn't say that word very well, of persons by the town, just in terms of what that means and, and what, what our role is, my understanding and doing a little research on, on this bylaw, this, this was, the committee was created in 1984, when Collins Corner, which is, Leonard Collins was a, wrote for The Advocate and was very active in the community, there was, the, right at School of Court in Mass Ave, there was a memorial to him, and in the 1984 town meeting, this Public Memorial Committee was created, and Mrs. Mahan would know better over the years, but I mean, I know they were active when there was discussion about renaming the football field behind the high school back in 2005, hasn't been a lot of activity otherwise, but I, I think just to get an understanding as to what the, the bylaw or what their powers are, what the status of the individuals are and, and the terms, before we start talking about where we, where we go with this, because it, it just, it, it just seems to me, I don't remember ever reappointing someone in the three and a half years I've been on the board, so I, I would guess just about everybody's a holdover, and, and so, it'd be nice just to get that clarified.
I, there is one person that was reappointed in the last year, the rest of them are expired.
Okay, someone, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corsey, Mr. Hurd?
Well, I guess, just a question for Attorney Heim, because it sounds like we're being asked to specifically send a few items to the Public Memorials Commission, is the agenda item sufficiently, are we in violation of open meeting law, because I didn't actually know what this agenda item was, and it doesn't mention the items that were being asked to send along to the Public Memorials Committee, so is, and, is it defined enough in this agenda for us to make that vote?
Mr. Chair?
So, the agenda item states, just in case folks are following along, referrals to Public Memorial Committee seeking a new member, it's clear that anticipated for discussion were some kind of referrals to the Public Memorial Committee, the specific referrals at issue haven't been enumerated, so it's a little bit on the border, I would say, you know, if the board wants to proceed, there's a good faith articulation that this is a summary of what you're gonna be discussing, so I, I certainly think you can proceed, I, I don't know it's as clear as I would ideally like it to be in terms of saying, referring, you know, this specific bench or this specific field, because the idea in part would be to get the stakeholders necessary to provide comment on that specific thing, so, I, I suppose I would say I would prefer it to be a little bit more specific, but I, I wouldn't say that it's per se a violation.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we were discussing a procedure to refer item things to the Public Memorials Committee rather than specific items, I'm just saying, yeah.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hurd, and Ms. Helms?
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, too, I, I would like to suggest that perhaps because the rationale has, was presented to us in the Warren Article hearings by Mr. Schlickman, that we do refer the Magnolotzi Way, Magnolotzi Boulevard proposal to the Public Memorials Committee, because we already said that we would, or at least we agreed that we did, I think if, I'll defer to my colleagues, if it would be better to, to notice that for next, for our next meeting, so that it's more clear and Attorney Heim is, is more comfortable with that, I think that's fine with me, but I, I'd like to make that suggestion to my colleagues that we, especially as we head into another cycle of town meeting, I think town meeting could reasonably come back and ask us what happened with that, if anybody cares about it.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, what was my motion?
If you want me to make it, that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move that, that we, A, refer Mr. Schlickman's request, and subsequent to that, town meeting's vote regarding Magliozzi Way, I'm not gonna say it right, to the Public Memorials Committee to initiate the process with them, and then, the second part, I don't think we need a motion, which is, the Chair and Town Council are going to gather the information on committee members' years, you know, who was appointed recently, who isn't, and then, when the Chair deems it appropriate a future agenda, he'll put that on as an agenda item to give us all that information and then have the discussion that on as an agenda item to give us all that information, and then have the discussion around that, so we can get membership and reappointments back into the normal course of business. So I guess my sole motion would be, because we don't need a motion to ask the chair to do that, since he already has indicated he would, would be to, just on the Magliozzi request, refer that to the Public Memorials Committee.
Second.
So we have a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have, I'm sorry, so we have a motion, my Mrs. Mahan?
Oh, sorry, I thought you said is that, sorry.
Second.
My second, my Mr. Hurd, you know, so, any discussion, questions? Well, I'll just add to this, so what I was hearing Mr. Corsi say, though, is that he really wanted a better understanding of what the charge of this committee, commission is, you know, before we, we send anything over, and, and, I think that would be good, you know, and we can certainly send something over and then, and then say, wait, you know, and then we do, we're going to find out, do the research, and then proceed accordingly, you know, but I thought, I thought Mr. DeCoursey raised some good points and something that I think we should do, so if we are to do that, I think it, it might be a little more confusing if we send something over right now and then say, wait, as opposed to waiting until we get the information that we will get from our research, and then make an decision.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mrs. Mahan?
I think for this particular request, since it started, it's coming up on a year ago, I believe what Mr. DeCoursey, and I don't mean to speak to him, but I will say, I believe it was, it's a different request that's under correspondence received, and we'll get to that discussion when we get to it, so, I really think we should, I just would advocate that we, you know, we refer that, either the chair or the acting board administrator can contact the committee to let them know that it's coming, but that there are some housekeeping, membership issues we're going to deal with first, before they get to that, and I agree, maybe we should hold any other requests that have come in, we have one right now, within the past two weeks, but that, but I think we should have Magliozzi there, so that when everything is defined, we're ready to go with that one right away, so, but I'll leave it to my colleagues on the vote.
I appreciate that. Mrs. DeCoursey?
Yeah, and Mrs. Mahan is, is right, my concern is with the correspondence received on the Downing Square request, and so I don't have an issue with the referral at this time on the other matter that came up last year.
Right. That's interesting, thank you, you know, so, so I think then, at this point, we're all set, so on a motion, you know, to refer the proposal that we create a Magliozzi Boulevard, I mean, for that unnamed roadway, by Mrs. Mahan, and a second by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Great, you know, so, we're moving on now to correspondence received, you know, so we have Arlington Climate Resiliency Resources, tells held, by Beth Malachek, and a proposal to rename Downing Square by Cory Smith, and the receipt of the online ADA compliance strategy and training plan by General Roman, our public information officer. Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move receipt of the various pieces of correspondence, but I'd like to speak to number 17 specifically, if I could?
Yes, please.
Okay, so there was a request here for referral, I cannot support a referral of this matter to the Public Memorial Committee, and the reason why is, in looking at the letter, and there was a reference made to Downing Square, Downing Memorial Square was dedicated on May 5th, 1946, so about 500 people who attended the dedication of two brothers, both of whom died during World War II. James Francis Downing died on September 10th, 1943, in a plane crash in California while in the service, he attended West Point, he attended MIT, and was in California serving our country. His brother Cornelius died in combat on November 20th, 1944, in Italy. At the ceremony, were two other Downing brothers, both of whom were in the service. Cornelius Downing, who was a master sergeant, killed in action, had a widow who, had a baby, I believe it was a baby boy, he never saw his child, because he was serving our country. That memorial is still there, we honor our veterans, we honor the service of the Downing family, they were, they lived at Nine Blossom Street, down the street from Downing Square. I can't support any change, or even any discussion of changing the name there, and what I'd like to do is a couple news articles, one from The Advocate, one from Arlington News, which is a newspaper back in the time, that described the service that they gave to our country, and the speakers who included one of our, our congressperson at the time, Edith Norris Rogers, who attended the ceremony, I'd like to make that part of the record of this meeting, but I'd move receipt, but I can't do anything further with it.
Right. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to second it, and also say thank you, I agree on the Downing Square, this board, nor the Public Memorial Committee, has never, first of all, the issue of renaming something, changing from Downing Square, I wouldn't even entertain at all, but to stop making a practice about businesses, I know there were representations in the letter regarding a gratitude by the letter writer, and perhaps a second, but what I'd like to do is also not refer Agenda Item 17 to the Public Memorial Committee, and if, I'm not saying the chair has to do this, and/or if the person who submitted the request reaches out to you, traditionally, it's been the Chamber of Commerce that recognizes businesses here in Arlington, that's something in comport, that's something that they traditionally do, and the town hasn't done, so, I agree with Mr. DeCoursey for all the points that he stated far more eloquently than I did, and I did have something on, a question on Agenda Item 16, and I'm going to look to my right, I don't know if my colleagues, if I monopolize the time on 17, if not, I would ask if, on 17, the correspondence from our public information officer regarding ADA compliance, which I'm extremely pleased to see that in there, and I understand from the reading of it, that all employees, staff, I can't remember what word they used, that posted the website, A, will receive training, if the town manager could, in the next whatever amount of weeks, because it sounds like this isn't happening like next week or anything like that, or maybe it is, if you could just provide the board with information regarding, unless you can answer it tonight, is it literally every employee that posts, is it every department head of a, of a office that posts?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. World.
So, Joan Roman, our public information officer, has a working group of people who do post, so they're, within every office, there's probably one or two people who have the skill to do it, not everybody does, I, for example, have no idea how to post something, so, there are certain staff throughout town hall and other departments who know how to do this, she is just starting this training, she's been doing various other trainings over the years, but this is a particular focus on this area, and she does intend to report back to the board more specifically about progress in the future, so there will be further information coming.
Okay, so then, I'll look to whatever you and she deem it's an appropriate time to provide the board with the backup information, and I just, I would ask, if it's too voluminous and too many pages, then I can just check in with the office, the select board office with the person that's designated from there, but if it's not, and she probably will do this anyways, Ms. Roman, that, I, I'm certainly interested in what ADA compliance is to the town website, if I were a person posting to it, which I do not have access, nor should I, should, should I have access to the town website, but if that's something that could be included in the report, unless it's something, A, it shouldn't be, or it's sensitive information, or it's too long, and if not, I'll check with the person in the office.
If I might just add one item.
Yes.
We had an example of it tonight, when Julie Brazil was talking about a piece of paper with a date stamp on it, and the ability of somebody to read those documents that doesn't have text that is recognizable that way, is an ADA problem. So, when you're posting things or creating things, it has to be essentially machine-readable, and so it's teaching people how to set up their documents, how to create their documents in the first place, so that everything on it is going to be accessible to somebody who needs help reading those documents.
Okay, thank you, so, once again, I second Mr. DeCoursey's motion, and also agree not to refer Agenda Item 17, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, anyone else? Mr. Corsi?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, there's one thing I just meant to add, and it just goes to the Downing Square, I just want to read a very brief quote from, from, from that day, one of the speakers, and I think it's apt, given what we were discussing, and the quote goes as follows, "In days to come, people may ask, what means this square, what does this square mean?", and the speaker said, "It means that America does not forget those who gave their lives for their country, this is only one of the signposts of America", and, you know, these are one of those days, and we remember the Downing Brothers.
Great, well, thank you very much, me, so, with respect to not referring, I'm fine with that, me, I was also fine with referring, because I figured it would not be approved, and that the Memorial Committee would explain why that request wouldn't be honored, you know, and so it would be an opportunity for the Memorials Committee to educate, I mean, the requester, as well as everyone else in town, in as to why that square was named as its name, and why we aren't going to change it, that education is taking place here, you know, and hopefully, you know, more people will, will understand why, I mean, so, I'm fine with not referring, but that was why I was fine with also referring it, and with respect to Item 18 and the ADA compliance strategy, you know, I appreciated the town manager sending this to me, and I decided to do it as correspondence received, instead of a full-fledged item, because it did indicate that there was going to be follow-up later on, the extensive follow-up later on, so, I figured we wait and get a report when there was more to report, me, versus a preliminary description of what the plan is at this point. But, that said, if someone wants it to be an agenda item sooner rather than later, I'll be happy, you know, to put it on an agenda as soon as possible, otherwise, we'll wait until we have some more progress, and then we can report back in, probably in a year or so. So, with a motion to receive all the items, but not to refer Item Number 17, by Mr. DeCoursey, and a second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you very much, me, and so, we have the opportunity for a second open forum, is there anyone there?
No, there's no hands raised at this time.
Yeah, great, so I want to read the preamble, and so, now, on to business.
Sorry.
I'll start with some, Mrs. Maher, Mrs. Mahan?
No, 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 I was clearing my throat, I'm sorry.
No, no, and, and I actually was saying, Ashley's name, Mrs. Maher.
Oh, no, no business, thank you.
Mr. Heim?
No, no business, thank you.
Holer?
No, no business, thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
No, no business.
Mr. Helmut?
No, no business.
Mr. Corsi?
No, no business.
Oh, I'll put everything on number 424, sorry, go ahead, I do have, I do have new business, three things, I'll try to do it quickly, one is, Mr. Chairman, there's an envelope here with your name on it, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I don't know what it is, if it's a request of you, or a thank you, or something, so I'll give that back to Ms. Maher, so, just so you know that it's here. The second one, I won't go into too much detail, but when I get home, I'm going to forward an email to the town manager, and to the acting board administrator, to then forward to my colleagues as an FYI, because I have seen today, well, it started yesterday, but it also was again today, that there's a posting on one of the Arlington lists regarding an additional yard waste pickup, and it indicated, from my memory, that our recycling coordinator was contacted, and that there would be something perhaps provided. I don't want to provide any more information, because if that's not the case, because we don't have anything official on the town website or anything like that, but as soon as I get it home, I'm going to forward that, and I would ask the town manager, if that is the case, I mean, if it's not the case, let us know that, too, but if that is the case, if you could just indicate that to the board, because I can't tell you how many times I've gone into Dunkin' Donuts, or Walgreens, and they're like, what do you mean, I can't eat December 9th, so, I'm not going to say anything more on that, what I think the date is and all that, and then, my last, new business is, I would request through the chair, especially with the 2023 year coming and New Year starting, you know, we have the fiscal year, we have the calendar year, I also had a conversation with the chair, met with Karen, met with our human resources director, Ms. Malloy, earlier this morning, and what I'd like to do is also stop the process to, I'm just going to put dates out, and people, on Friday, to post the board administrator job, the internal posting for it to go out on Friday, in concert with what Ms. Malloy does, you know, for similar positions, I think it's usually open two weeks, but don't hold me on that, and then go forward from there in the process, what I'd like to, what, if I had my way, is that by the beginning of 2023, but I'm not going to say January 1st, but sooner rather than later, that we have a permanent board administrator, especially with all the duties that kick in come January 1st, that, you know, common victuals, liveries, things like that, where we need an official, not that we can't have an acting board administrator, sign that and do all that, but I'd like to move forward that, I'd like it to start on Friday, and I guess I would leave it to my colleagues, and we can't really discuss it under new business, but what I would request, and that may not happen, I'm just trying to say what's in my head, and what I discussed with Ms. Malloy, but maybe by Thursday morning, if my colleagues contacted the chair and/or Ms. Malloy, so both of them can get a sense of where you all are at, because I could be way off base, and people don't see the need to, you know, maybe I'm doing it too quickly, but, so, that's the other part of my new business, just to report that I had a conversation only with the chair last Thursday, with Ms. Malloy this morning, I'd like to post the internal posting for the board administrator position, I'm only one person, so I'll leave it to my colleagues, whether you speak to the chair and/or Ms. Malloy, if possible, before the end of this week, and I'm not saying my, me picking the date is going to be the date, I know it's ambitious, I just want to do that. So that's my last new business, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my colleagues, I'm sorry I'm running.
No problem, no problem at all, you know, I, I just want to be respectful opening, I'm not saying much on that last item, except to say that I am planning on having a conversation with Mrs. Malloy, you know, this week, you know, so, thank you very much for that, you know, the other thing is, I'd like to express appreciation to Ms. Maher, and also Ms. DeFrancisco, for pulling together the members of the committees, I mean, that the select board, committees to which the select board makes appointments, and committees to which the town, town manager makes appointments, I mean, things were quite a bit out of date, you know. You know, things were quite a bit out of date, you know, and it took some effort, and it's very much appreciated. The main reason I wanted it is because I wanted to send letters, I mean, to the chairs of these committees, asking them to weigh in on their thoughts about the town manager's election process, you know. So, 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 so I have that, and now I can do that outreach. And the last item is our next meeting, and when, where? And so, I know here, and I think we had a little bit of discussion the last time Ms. Mahan was with us, about whether or not we were going to go out afterwards. Normally, that's a meeting that starts early, and we do a shortened meeting, and then we head out. I don't think we made a decision, you know, so I think if we're going to, we have to make a decision tonight, right?
I'd like to do that.
What was that?
I mean, that works for me. So here's the question, so are we going to have a short agenda and start the meeting at 6:00 o'clock?
So it's going to be on Wednesday, 21st. So we like to start it early, and then go out?
Okay.
Okay. I think everybody's nodding here, Mr. Chairman, in the affirmative.
All right. You know, I guess we can just decide on the spot when to go out. Okay. All right. That's fine. And so, so then, I'll see you there, you know, on the 21st at 6.
Move to John.
Second?
Yes. All right. So on a motion adjourned by Ms. Mahan, and a second by Mr. Helms, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right, folks, thank you very much, and have a good night.